The time is 6:30 and we will call the regular February 9th, 2015 Charles City Board of Education meeting to order and have roll call please.
Dyte.
Present.
Walker.
Here.
Crispy.
Present.
Maycumber.
Here.
Wintering.
Here.
All members present. Agenda item one is the approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or corrections, Dr. Cox?
No.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second it.
Been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. Roll call vote please.
Walker.
Yes.
Crispy.
Yes.
Maycumber.
Yes.
Wintering.
Yes.
Dyte.
Yes. Motion carried five to zero. Agenda item two, to welcome the visitors and have public comment. Remind everyone that this would be the time to have comment on something that is not on the agenda this evening and we would ask you to keep your comments to two minutes in length.
Thank you Scott. Doug Lindeman speaking, Charles City. I handed to the board members a plain sheet from a Des Moines Register article on Sunday with regard to county debt. Within that article on their website, they listed the school debt. So I happened to go down through that list to list some relative schools, Decorah, Independence, Mason City, Waverly, Nashville, Charles City, as to where their indebtedness is per student. And Charles City came in 143rd with our $10 million, about $6,000 per student, just a shade over that. It's interesting looking over those numbers that if you go to your proposed 18.3 million, near the bottom of my sheet, with 1,500 students roughly, you'd come in 51st in the state as to your indebtedness per student. If you go to Phase Two and I plug that in at 40 million, give or take, at 40 million, we'd have in student indebtedness per capita of 25,000. We'd be fifth in the state for our student indebtedness. Quite high. I'd make one comment last, at our last board meeting, Piper Jaffrey talked about debt. It's a good thing. Schools and cities should be running up debt to get things done. I'll just remind you what happened in the 70s. Farmers were told, you know, they're not making any more land, buy more land, going to debt. The bankers encouraged it. I got here in the 80s and most of what I did was bankruptcy work for farmers and for bankers. And at that time, I had to carry a gun in my briefcase because you didn't know if the banker or the farmer might go off on you. Debt is not as good a thing as you might think. People tell you, oh, it will work out. Well, keep in mind by using that sales tax revenue, you're betting and gambling your student population won't go down for some reason, you're betting and gambling that the sales tax revenue won't plummet because of a nationwide recession or worldwide recession. Thank you.
Thank you. Right at two minutes. Is there any other public comment? Hearing none, we'll move to agenda item three, which is comments by board members and the superintendent. I'd like to start off by saying it was a great weekend for our comments and it's a great time to be our comments and Dr. Cox has more details.
Yes, Charles City students had a fantastic weekend. Our wrestling team finished first at the sectional tournament over in New Hampton. The girls and boys bowling teams finished first and second respectively here in Charles City at the district tournament. And we had multiple groups earn Division One ratings at speech contests in Decorah. The group improv will perform at Allstate on February the 21st. And we had one other Allstate group, the Reader's Theater, and they are a non-performing group. So very successful weekend for our students. The second thing that I'll share tonight is that I've been selected to take part in a superintendent's, excuse me, the Leadership Institute for Superintendents and it's conducted by Harvard University. So I'll be heading out to Massachusetts, March 1st to the 4th. And the focus is on systemic improvement and how to overcome challenges of implementation in order to sustain reform efforts.
Wow, congratulations.
Thank you.
That's very good news.
Yeah, thanks.
Any comments by board members?
Just one update, our food service committee has gone to Casson, Minnesota last week and visited that middle school. The enrollment is about 500 students more than what our enrollment is. And they're served by Tahoe Food Service, which we had seen down at the convention at IASB. The food service was fast, efficient, the food was delicious, nutritious, fresh. They coincidentally had the same menu item that we had the last time that we visited Chartwell's. It was beef nachos again. And so it was interesting to see the difference and similarities in how they serve that. You know, and coming away from that, my goodness, I think that either one of those companies would be fine for our students or for our district. I feel comfortable with both of those companies and, you know, we need to talk about that a little bit more at the board table, you know, what we want to do. But it was a very good visit and I'm encouraged by seeing everything firsthand.
Good.
Thank you.
I think that same night, they had a documentary on television with Casson schools and their hot lunch program.
Did they really?
Same night you guys were up.
Very good.
The interesting thing about that setup there is it felt a little bit more like what we are designing in our plan for our new middle school. A little bit different than maybe the mall type feeling that we saw at Elbert Lee. So, you know, if you ever up that way, it might be worth a stop to go in and take a peek. But I took a bunch of pictures, they're on Facebook and Twitter, so you can look at those too.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Anyone else? Hearing none, we'll move on to agenda item four, Exploring Science Careers presentation. We have two students from Mrs. Donna Forsyte's Exploring Science class to make their presentation and the floor is yours.
Hi, I'm Jamie Saliner.
And I'm Taylor Hockman.
And we are juniors at the Charles City High School and we're enrolled in a class called Exploring Science Careers taught by Mrs. Forsyte. A little bit about what we do is we get out into the community a lot, we leave school a lot during her class, which is fun. We've gone to Valero, Cambrex, Zoetis, and dentistry offices and other businesses, mostly healthcare fields because it used to be a health, just healthcare class, but we had to broad, make it a little more broad. But all the kids in the class right now are looking at going into healthcare field.
And this class gives us the opportunity to go out and actually do some job shadowings. So first trimester, we were required to do two and then second trimester, we were required to do four. And first trimester, we had to choose our favorite job that we had previously shadowed. And I had chosen obstetric nursing and Jamie had chosen, or she compares, audiology and a pharmacist.
Well, the problem was is everything I shadow, I like because I just like everything. A pharmacist, you know, they help dispense drugs and tell the patient how to take them and how to store them and everything like that. An audiologist helps with hearing laws, hearing aids and stuff like that. A pharmacist can work in their own clinic or in a hospital, which is where I got to shadow, at the Charles City Hospital. An audiologist, I shadowed a family friend over in Mason City, so I got to see a clinic. She works in the clinic next to the hospital. An audiologist can also work in schools. And yeah.
And I chose one career that I really liked. I chose to focus on obstetric nursing. They're basically nurses that focus on the OB department. You have to take extra training courses to become an OB nurse. They highly recommend you do floor work first so you're able to get out with geriatric patients, regular patients as well. It all depends kind of where you live, your day, you could just specialize in taking care of the newborns after, helping moms during delivery. It all kind of depends on how big of a hospital you work in. And I mostly just like this job because I definitely could see myself doing this every day.
This class has really helped me look farther ahead than just high school, has helped me plan classes for next year and then into college, so it's been a great help there. We've got to go to the fire station and just a lot of make us better consumers and know more about Charles City. I've learned a lot, I've lived here my whole life and I didn't know some of the things until this class. It's a two-type class and so in the first part of the first trimester, we do a lot of HIPAA laws. Darla, from a nurse at the hospital, came in, did a whole HIPAA law and then we had Anchoji, a lawyer, and Town come and talk to us all about confidentiality. So that wasn't a problem when we go out into these hospital and healthcare fields. So they trust us, so it's a good class.
Yeah, without this class, we wouldn't be able to have a lot of these shadowing opportunities. So we'd like to thank you for the time you've given us to present to you guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very good.
Moving on to agenda item five is BLDD Design Update. Jean Underwood and the team.
I'll have to open a CD after.
Okay.
Just having to trip over the mic. Justin's coming.
There we go.
Let's see if this, yep. You want to?
Be careful you don't trip on it.
Just don't trip on it, that's all we're worried about.
So tonight is the completion of design development, so that's one of the design phases in the process of developing the building. So the next step from this point is construction documents. So at this point, we start getting into the role netting details. So at the end of design development, we'd like to be done making changes in a perfect world. We will still, you know, develop and modify in minor ways, but all the major decisions have been made and ready to keep moving. So one thing that we do, we met with staff and teachers a couple months ago. Today and tomorrow, we've been meeting with the staff for our follow-up meeting for them to have a chance to give us final input. So tomorrow is going to be the end of design development officially, once we talk to the rest of the group. So to give you a bit of an update on what we've done since the last time we were here, we've been working diligently refining the design. Let's see, is this also a laser pointer?
Yes.
Oh, yes. So the general shape, the learning studios on the right side of the page, the commons and gymnasium on the left side of the page, that's exactly the same. Second floor, same layout. Moving in on the commons and the main entry, we still have the main entry here on the east side with a secure entrance sequence. This is your administration area. We met with the administration staff today, we're going to make some modifications to this, so they have access to the nurses' office, to the secretaries, because they do help dispense vacations and take care of kids throughout the day. But as a result of that, this whole area will need to kind of shift around. So we'll get updates back to administration on that. So as we come into the building, you can see this area with kind of the circular edge. That is at grade level. The grade level is five feet below the rest of the building elevation. This allows us to eliminate any exterior stairs, so all of the sidewalks and pavement outside are one-level surface. The grade, you know, the grade slips away from the building for water drainage and those kinds of things, but there are no steps outside and so that was an important feature. So as you come into the lower commons area, you can see a set of stairs here at the east and then another set of stairs and an elevator in this location. So the elevator is a three-step elevator. It starts on the lowest level, which is the lower commons. You can get on the other side, five feet up onto the main level of the building, and then from there, you can also go up to the second floor. So it's a fairly central location, fairly close to the learning studios and then the library, which is an information commons, which is right above the administration area. You can see today, we're showing furniture layouts for all of the spaces to give you an idea of what kind of seating you can get in those spaces. What we're showing today is kind of a typical day, a typical school day, not banquet seating or a sporting event, something like that going on, just a regular school day. So you can see, we've got some built-in vacant seating, some small tables, some larger tables. Some of them are more on a counter height, some are regular lower seating to provide a lot of flexibility to allow classes or small rooms to students, but also very large times to allow seating. In the gymnasium area, we've got about 700 seats on the floor and then the features continue up over the locker rooms to add another approximately 800 seats for a total seating capacity of around 1,500. The locker rooms, we've got girls on one side and boys on the other, PE and athletics storage on the side, our electrical service room, and then a laundry facility. We met with athletics and PE today, there's some modifications that they would like to make to the locker rooms to help them function better, especially since we're going to have high school students coming for athletic events, middle school students for PE, how do we get enough lockers to accommodate all of those groups of students without expanding the footprint? One of their big concerns was that the locker rooms and the support facilities here are smaller than what they have at the existing high school. And so trying to kind of reconcile function with our footprint that we really can't change with the budget that we have. So we're working on some redesigns and reconfiguring, kind of consolidating some areas that can be consolidated, but still being able to accommodate high school and middle school, you know, using those spaces throughout the day. Moving over to the learning studio side. As you come into the learning studios, we have the cafe serving area here. You can see that we've bumped out these walls a little bit to allow for more seating in this area. So I believe we've got about 60, just under 60. So that's enough for two full classes at one time. We've got another 60 seats on the floor above us and then another 100, whatever the max is, two lunches, everybody says. So between the main commons and these two seating areas, you can get 250 students eating lunch at one time. So you can have two lunch periods. As you move into the learning studios, we have the three lab spaces, the media center and the listen lab with a gathering area in between. Each learning studio has a boys and girls toilet room. On the first floor, we have resource areas for FCS, industrial tech, music, and then on the side, arts. So those teachers have home-based to store materials that they aren't currently using and as they go through lessons with students, they bring those materials into the lab spaces. So kind of a home base and an office for them, keeping the majority of their items available for lessons outside of the actual lab classroom. So it allows us to get more space for students to move around and use their individual classroom spaces. You still have access into the courtyard. We're not showing a lot of development of the courtyard yet, we'll keep getting there. There is an overhang on the second floor, you can see a column line right here, so the part of the courtyard will be covered. So if it's raining and they still need to do something outside, they can be out of the overhang. I don't know if you'd want to do that or not, but we've got that option.
For a hot fall day.
Yes, exactly. We've got some enlargements of each of these different spaces, so opportunities. On the second floor, on the gymnasium commons wing, you can see that additional seating above the locker rooms on the two ends. This is the lower roof that you're seeing here in this location. The commons is a two-story space, you can see the treehouse, the stairs and the elevator in the center. And then the information commons library function here, we'll be meeting with those folks tomorrow. Counselor's office seat. You can see the study, the book stacks, and the seating makes a lot with those spaces. Learning studio on the second floor is exactly the same as what we showed on the first floor. So we've done some further development in the lab spaces. I'm going to come back to these, Danielle, some of the presentations and some of the built-in features of those spaces and how they help you can be used. The media lab and the listen lab. A couple features in the media lab that I'd like to point out. You can see that is a control room between the two media labs. This allows you to do more of a recording studio function or we're going to have green screen paint on this wall if you wanted to videotape activities with the green screen in the back. You can get your camera back as far as the control room. We've also got a practice room here with a window to it so that if you want to record drums or say an instrument in the practice room, have the rest of the ensemble in the media center where you have the opportunity to do that. The other thing about this space is the furniture. The tables will be set that they can fold up and then you can stack them against the wall so that you can have a wide open space for if you wanted to have a chorus rehearsal or if you wanted to be videotaping something. So trying to provide as much flexibility in that space as possible. We're showing some case work with countertop, you can put printers, those kinds of things if you're doing a graphic design, you know, workshop using computers, those kinds of things. The other thing about the practice, the practice rooms that we're building into is the ability to turn that into a virtual environment. So you can project, you'd be able to project onto three walls and that would be like a 3D cave. This is the teachers' planning office area. You can see we have space for aid teachers, collaboration tables, lockers for those teachers and staff and teachers' aides and then a small storage room as well. These are the special ed spaces, we met with special ed today. We're going to make some revisions so that we've got the same layout on both floors. So we're looking at kind of a modification, a layout on the left where we have a handicap accessible toilet room with shower, two breakout calm areas or intervention areas, a small storage area and then a kitchenette and area to do some small group work. So we'll have the exact same layout on both floors. Before, we just had this physical disability, special needs at the first floor and here on the second floor, but as students go from fifth grade, sixth grade and up to seventh and eighth grade, it didn't make sense to make students that may need to use the handicap accessible restroom on the first floor, you know, travel up and down. So everybody agreed that it was a better solution to have both floors alike and have access from the learning studio on either side, be able to directly get into those spaces. So it turned out to be a really great compromise and I think it solved a lot of issues. The slide is the serving and cafe area. Rooming and food service tomorrow. Still discussing how that whole system is going to work. I've got some placeholder equipment, serving area is shown for now, but we really haven't gotten into all the details of that until we do a little more informational program, how we want to approach food service, whether it's something that we use, a company like Chartwell or Tahoe, something that you do in-house, or if you decide to go back to more of a traditional cafeteria-style lunch program. So I don't want to get into this too much. We do show the existing kitchen, adding a washing cooler and freezer outdoors, revamping some areas to provide a lot more dry storage, all the things that you need, the infrastructure that you need to be able to serve the number of students that we're talking about serving out of that kitchen. This is the administration area and the council's office. The council's office is not changing and then, like I mentioned before, will receive some modifications. This is the information commons on the second floor, as well as you can see the treehouse, the elevator and the stair. They come up, we'll have some, you know, the 3D image of the interior, I was going to show that in 3D, it's a little bit easier to see what's going on there. We have a lot of really cool things, lighting and materials and stuff like that for that area, it's going to be really exciting. The other thing to note is we're showing a door out into the patio or balcony on the second floor of the information commons. These are the locker rooms on the side of the gymnasium. What we're looking at revising is combining the toilet rooms, shower rooms into one, instead of having two separate ones for PE and for athletics, to have that as one to kind of save some space and have eight showers available to athletics and eight showers available to PE at any one time. And trying to get some additional lockers on the side and possibly make this area, the PE lockers aren't big enough to make us like a routine room during athletic events. So we'll see what we can come up with. The other thing to note is that the coaches' office, which is also would be like the official's training area on both sides, those don't open directly into the locker rooms, so it allows a female or a male coach or official to be on either side and to be used all the time. So if there's a girls' event and a boys' event going on at the same time and you've got all male officials, they can use both of those rooms or vice versa. These are the resource spaces for music, FCS and industrial tech and then art. In music, we've got one large office shared by music staff and then we have instrument storage, music storage, uniform storage, that's the last one. So this has been one of the existing science labs. This room has already been done at all of the Milton's, the casework has mostly been removed. So we felt like that was a good place for music since they had a lot of specific storage needs that needed to be provided. We're leaving the door that goes into the Asian Science Lab prep area so that if they were doing lessons or somebody needed a quiet place, make a phone call, you can just pop next door. It gives them the ability to do the rest of those spaces if it's needed. FCS and industrial tech would share the closest classroom to the new addition. There's two office areas. All of the existing science casebook is still there, so there's a lot of cabinets and drawers that they can just use the way they are. Then additional storage units could be brought in, shelves or pieces to supplement what is already there. There's water at the teacher's station in both rooms, so if they need to clean something up, get a drink, those kinds of things, that's already built into the space. So really, all we're looking at is just moving stuff into, maybe painting the spaces that leave in the existing flooring except for the teachers' offices, those would get new carpet, but keep the existing ceiling and really do minimal amount of work just to improve the spaces. All right, so I'm going to have Danielle, Kim explain our thoughts behind the different labs. Can we just talk about one?
Sure.
Hi Danielle, I don't know that all of you have met me before, but I'm a interior designer for the project, so thanks for having me. So I guess today, like, look at the design lab. As of right now, design and explore are pretty much mirror images, but maybe the furniture might be slightly different. Those are built-in, they'll be pretty similar. So along this wall right here, we are talking about doing in the central part, some built-in bookshelves. And we're thinking that it could have their little totes or cubbies, which they have for projects that they're currently looking at, their work in progress projects, and they'll come up there. Or it could be used for specific teacher storage for a particular unit if needed. But then on either side, you see these rectangles, those would be mobile furniture pieces that have sliding totes. And on the backside, their marker board. So they can be wheeled out into the space, they can be used as a teaching surface, they're used as storage. But then when they tuck in this little area, we're showing some sliding barn door type things that are marker boards. So those can slide over and hide the clutter. Or you can put those mobile storage units in kind of backwards so the marker board faces out and then close up the barn doors. You have continuous wall-to-wall writing surface, teaching surface. And we talked to the teachers today and one thing they suggested they may like is if there's a magnetic capability on some of those surfaces so they can hang up posters for particular units or if they aren't drawing, so that kind of a thing. So that's kind of the main kind of functional teaching area we're looking at. But we're also talking about having these mobile marker boards that would be really lightweight, they're five foot wide, kids can wheel them around.
So that's kind of the main kind of functional teaching area we're looking at. But we're also talking about having these mobile marker boards that would be really lightweight or five foot wide. Kids can wheel them around. So if the teacher says, hey, get in your groups, go work on project X because they set it up for themselves. They can have a little more staying in their environment and how it functions. Additionally, the smart boards where you're considering or interactive whiteboards to be not proprietary would have casters as well with a short throw protector arm right on them. So, you know, we're showing them right here as, here's a better view, kind of a conferencing setup. But they could be built into the space for lecture segments or a video segment or just group work sharing. So that's kind of some of the flexibility and furniture we're looking at. But we're also talking about in these prep let spaces, having it almost portable, having really durable floors with floor drains. So if they wanted to do a soda and mint totes experiment and make a mess, they can. And it's just easy to clean up from there. So the storage we're looking at in here would probably be plastic of some kind, you know, something that's not going to corrode with water or anything like that. Additionally, there are then windows that slide open on either side of the prep let so that they can pass through a project or a teacher can assemble something here and slide it through for the kids to use. They can also monitor these kind of trough sinks that are happening for cleaning up biology experiments or cleaning paintbrushes and those kinds of things. Oh yeah, okay, so it's not shown in this plan, but we were talking about how can the ceiling have kind of slots in two sections. So in this one, it would be a little bit longer to come down into that kind of L shape. And within those ceiling slots, we would have utilities, kind of coils that would pull down power or gas or data or whatever utilities we come down to need. Sometimes they have compressed air as an option. So it really comes down to how extensive utilities that you want in the space. Looking at LED lighting, bright, light reflective surfaces and we'd do a really nice environment.
I'm gonna try to open another file, just go on to the next thing. Now, are there any questions on this document before I move on?
We come up with what we're gonna do for lockers, has that been?
Danielle, do you wanna talk about the locker? We're looking at moving lockers, we've done more live right of home, with a file.
Yeah, we're gene coding right now. Those are mobile locker units, you know, like you guys saw at the fair school. So we're considering those being a plastic coating system. Because plastic can be more durable. And it's gonna be a lot quieter than metal. And it's gonna be lightweight, so the kids could actually move those around. We showed them a couple of different configurations. They are two-tier right now. And so, on the first floor, we have a little bit of corner space. We will have some next to the courtyard. But the second floor, they have enough capacity that it will be entirely mobile events.
Excellent, thank you.
Sure. Alright. So this is the inch for the interior and furniture boards. But before I go into that, I was gonna talk a little bit about the exterior inspiration. We don't actually have a digital image for that, but we have those boards around for you right now. And so, talking with Jeff Johnson, I believe you guys know him from our office, he was really interested in the circle of life feedback that the students brought from kind of his prototype and initial design meetings. And so, that's where his base is seen from. And his overall goal is that the circle of life becomes literal in this design, that students have a sustainable building to learn in, they use the school as a tool, you're therefore better educated, lead healthier, better lives. And we continue that cycle of providing sustainable, healthy environments for future generations. So with that, he's looking at providing kind of more native tones to the exterior of the building. We're talking about kind of a warm gray color, a rusty copper kind of color, and then a nice limestone. So those directly relate to what's gonna be happening on the interior. Oh, and do you wanna make some stones there?
Oh, yeah, I do.
So, we brought physical samples of some of the different materials. This is extremely heavy, well, not extremely heavy, it's heavy, but surprisingly heavy. So, so the stone material is really minimally used, but at the key points of the building. So, some of the column here is the main entry. And then on the backside, or the, well, the future front door, main entry. So, in limited quantities, but in key areas to really highlight that it was a special place on the building. The next material, which is gonna be the primary material on the building, is fiber cement, so I have a couple of samples of that as well. So fiber cement is a component material. As you can see, I brought two samples. It comes in a lot of different textures and colors. So we can pretty much get whatever color we want. So today I have a sample that's something that looks more like kind of a rough limestone and then also a smooth finish. So we're looking at using a couple of different textures in the building. And I'll show you when we use the exterior views, where we might be using those and how we might be using those. There's a couple more samples of brand new array. There's a metal sample.
My hand is in this case?
That one of your left hand, that's a metal panel sample. We're also looking at using some metal panels in addition to the fiber cement in some key areas. For the most part, some of the higher areas and where we're using a darker color. But what you have currently in your hands, those are just window aluminum samples. Couple different colors, you have a selective exact color here, so you can touch something. One other thing I have is some glass, some glass samples. We're looking at using a tinted glass. So, what I have there is, you have the nod, there's two panes of glass. Do you have a feel of what it might look like color-wise? There's a green sample in the thing right now, and then I also brought a blue sample. So you can kind of just get a feel for what that might look like. Because the renderings really don't do glass well, you know, in the images, so. Let's do the interior inspiration.
So for the interiors, you're playing off the idea of the circle of life. You're kind of taking it a little more specific. So how can we inspire kids to be healthy and their choices and active and their lifestyle? And so, we decided to go with inspiration from programs. And how can programs and that inspire how the space looks? So here you can kind of see some images that we pulled from. We really wanted to reference some orange or school colors as well. And then, addition to that, I've done some research. I think the floor is going around now, and you can read the little text if you want. But I've done some research on the different colors that middle school kids like. You know, this is a space for them, so we wanna use colors that they're gonna relate to and respond to positively. So there's kind of a little bit of information about that. But in addition to that, you know, these are gonna be positive color. Maybe there's some branding that happens. Each of the labs has a specific color, explore is always this color, or design is always this color. Or we could look at doing it as a wave finding thing. So fifth grade is always this color and eighth grade is always this color. But using that to kind of inform the space and help, you know, it's just kind of that light bulb moment of, oh, this is where I'm supposed to be here. Oh, this is what's happening here. So those bright colors would be used for that. But for the actual lab spaces, we'd probably be looking at a little bit lighter colors and a little more subtle suggestion of that. And the reason for that is, you want the walls to be light enough color that they bounce light around. So the kids have a good learning environment. But it also saves you money because it's not really efficient because the lights don't have to work hard. So that's kind of what the balance we're trying to strike between, we have fun dynamic space and, you know, the whole is going to be in the bucket at the same time. So, we've also included some images, just some inspiration spaces that are bright, colorful, and different ways that these colors could be applied and so.
You can see the texture samples?
Yep. So what's going around right now are linoleum tile samples. This product's great because it's made of all natural materials that are rapidly renewable. So it's quickly made, sustainable, but it's also very low maintenance. So you're not gonna have to wax it the way you feel waxy. It's gonna be easy to take care of and it's gonna last a long time. It's also very durable, it's nickel resistant, and it has acoustical properties. So it's gonna help kind of soak up the sound and spaces.
What happens with that product if you puncture it?
Puncture, it is a tile, so that tile can be popped up and replaced.
Okay, easy enough.
But it actually, it has a much higher PSI rating than VCT. So if VCT's gonna crack or pop or, you know, really just fall apart, that has a much stronger, it's much more flexible. So it's gonna roll and puncture a little bit better.
So you can just pop it out and just glue a new tile down?
It's the same with the carpeting, correct? Carpets are tough.
Yes, and honestly carpet's gonna come up easier than a hard floor is, but it's still, yeah, the same principle. So those are potential laminate samples. The wood ones showing some of the wood tones. We were talking about having two wood tones, potentially different projects. Having the more structural and maybe railing being a medium wood tone and then the cabinet treaty and furniture being a white wood tone just to provide that contrast. And again, studies have shown that the more wood that's in your environment, the more pleasant way you respond. So, it's kind of what we're trying to carry through.
And can you talk about where that plastic wooden would be used?
So the wood ring one might be used in the cabinets. So those shelves we talked about in the lab, those could be that color. Or it could be, we have some built-in storage in kind of the nooks and crannies around the camps and caves. And then the darker one is just a stone look-alike that could maybe be used for countertops. So now, these are carpet samples that are going around. These are carpet tiles. So, they are really easy to replace if something were to happen to them. However, they are 100% cushioned. So this means that the color is integral to the yarns. The colors aren't gonna fade and it's gonna be really hard to dye it or stain it. But if that does happen, you can just replace the tile. The nice thing about these is that they're kind of, they've got a dense organic pattern to hide wear really well. You're gonna see those footpaths, you can see a lot of carpet.
How much light absorption do these have over the other type flooring?
Well, the way that light reflectance values work is that the floor doesn't really matter. They're gonna run the calculations at about desk height. And then as it goes up, it becomes more and more important. So your ceilings, acoustical ceiling tile or white ceilings, or that's where it's really important because it's really gonna bounce the light around. But typically, with people and furniture, the floors don't matter. They don't, you don't need to get light down to the floor.
Seems like the darker carpets and stuff in a home darken the whole room to the certain extent.
That's very true. And I think, any colors that we use, we wanna be very selective in rotation. We don't wanna just green everywhere, blue everywhere. You know, you wanna use it selectively and so that it is a welcoming environment and not the hurt from the eyes.
Can you tell us again, where does the carpet go?
Well, we're looking at offices would probably be carpeted. Treehouse might be a space that could be carpeted, maybe in the commons. Maybe those caves or camps could be, to show the media room. But a majority of the room, you're probably gonna want to be hard surfaces, especially with multiple dining situations that are happening.
Okay, sounds good.
Oh, yeah, well, let me pull up the issue for image and we'll pass this around to you.
So just out of curiosity, who's planning on picking these colors? You're not gonna ask us, are you?
Well, we'll do, assuming you don't need the inspiration board. If you approve the inspiration board, then we'll put together, we'll actually pull samples and put together a finished board and say, this is where these things will go. And then you would say, yes, I like this part, or swap this color out, or, you know, it's a very collaborative process.
Very good.
So we'll do the footwork, but you can have.
Unless you're asking Robin.
We'll give you two choices that we like both of them.
And then we get to pick, I like that idea.
Where do you use this at?
So, in this, this is a 3D view, kind of looking from the gym into the home spaces. So, that fabric sample you're holding is this treehouse canopy element. We're exploring different construction techniques and what it's made of, but that's what we're looking at right now. It's a mesh fabric that you can print it on. So you see that girl's picture on there. But we can print whatever kind of branding you want. You know, maybe there's an image, or maybe it's text, or maybe it's abstract shapes. But some way to really define the space. And we're thinking fabric may be a possible solution for that because of the skylight above, it allows light to still come through, backlight that image. But also maybe with the lighting design, maybe it might be lighted, so it does that. But that element really just helps kind of define this space and the treehouse feels like a comfortable little nook or cave to hide in and extension of that concept. Some other things you're seeing in this here, you can see the reference enjoy. So those will be that nice wood tone, reinforcing that a little bit. And then you can see some of the furnishings we're showing. These are some large group cafe high tables.
Well, I do, I do wanna point out, we switched software from our really sketchy design and quick stuff that Jeff does. And this is actually the software that we use to do the construction documents. So we have the capability to do live-like renderings within it. So, these are like the initial setup of those views when we turn the colors on so you can get an idea of what it would look like. But we can also do a photorealistic rendering as we get through the design process and start to flesh out exactly what colors are, what are the textures. As we design each and every individual element, we can then make this a photorealistic rendering. But we wanted you to be able to kind of get an idea of what the space would look like in general. So, when you're looking at this, it doesn't really look like a photo, but it can look like a photo. But we want you to kind of understand how the space might be used. One thing that we're gonna do is figure out, if you were gonna have a banquet in here, where would the speaker stand? And what would, what would the view of everybody in this space look like? And then figure out, do we need to install maybe a projection screen in a certain area so that that speaker could be broadcast so that everybody in the space can see him? Because we've got a lot of different levels and a lot of different things going on. So we'll be doing some more studies on different functions for that space and how it might work and just think of what might we need. The other thing that Danielle mentioned with lighting design, we've hired a lighting consultant to help us with key areas in the building. And one of them is the commons area. He does work nationally, like really super talented, really has a great feel for, you know, you say, I want this room to feel like this at this time of day and I want it to feel this way at another time of day. And he can develop a lighting solution that works across every event that you're gonna have in here. And has some really, has some really innovative ideas. So we'll be looking at doing some really cool features and lighting in the commons space and then in both of the gathered, or all four of the gathered spaces and some exterior entrance. So, we'll have more on that hopefully in another month or so to be able to show you what it might look like in different times of day. Or having a school dance, a banquet during the day of lunchtime, those kinds of things. Let me pull up the X here.
I've had some conversations with some folks, the teachers and that. And we discussed the five-foot level change. And initially, that was something we thought maybe wouldn't be an advantage. But now, after everything's coming together, we're realizing that this space then becomes more individualized. This space will be used more often individualized than it will be as a large group setting. So it's actually turned into a huge positive because we're gonna have multiple breakout spaces because of that level change as opposed to just having something like this for the few times that we have large events.
Exactly.
Yeah, without any shoveling outside, so win-win.
So, just to pop out to the exterior of the building, this is, this is the main entry. We might, we might be able to zoom in here a little bit closer. So this is the gymnasium on the backside here, the other two are the rooms off of the commons. This is the main commons entry and this is your learning studio classroom, kind of wing on the side. You can see we've simplified some of the exterior. We don't have as many main walls and columns. Kind of to help with budget concerns and kind of clean it up a little bit so that we can really spend more money inside than we are outside. But still make a really strong design statement. So, looking at spending a little bit more money on the commons area and the main entries and kind of those feature spaces in a little less, other parts of the building. But you can see, we've still got a lot of windows to get natural daylighting into the spaces and, you know, putting those things really where we need them and want them the most. So as far as materials go, this darker color would be kind of that rusty orange. And we see that as being that's more of a smooth surface. So like a smooth fiber cement panel, the darker one that we've been around. This kind of gray color would be the.
This kind of gray color would be that slate, that darker slate color. Here, you wanna hold those up for us here? So the darker slate color, we envision that as a metal panel and it'll probably be something that has more kind of a horizontal, more of a pattern to it. And then this what looks like this yellow is that cream color. And I can see that more is that textured, textured sample that we have. And we'll kind of investigate the different materials. We've tried out a few different ways to get a feel for it. The columns that you're seeing here, that's that stone wrapped on the, on the bottoms and then a wood column. And then this larger roof section would have steel tube members as the framing painted brown. But then we would have a real wood deck for the decking in that area, for the roof deck. So that area that pops up would be kind of a feature piece as far as the design goes.
And the underside of the soffit you're saying is metal, then?
On, on the bottom side is that you see the wood deck and then the steel framing.
You would, okay, so it'd be similar to what we saw in Albert Lee then? That was very nice. It was very attractive.
Yeah.
The Albert Lee High School is done very similarly.
And then just a unit on that view, and then we'll go to the other side. So we're showing some window shading devices on all the windows to help control the daylight. We want daylight, but we don't want glaring daylight. You can see we still have a balcony, but now it's just done more on the north side. Couple of reasons to do that, it saves some money and it's really more functional to be on that side than it is to be on the east side. You can see we've got windows on the first floor going into admin. Windows on the second floor are going into the information commons and then clear story windows up as well to help get a lot of daylight deep into that space.
Sort of have a cross popping out of that.
I'm not sure what that is. I think it's a light reflective. It's not the edge, the edge of the balcony for some reason.
I don't want Immaculate Conception to get confused.
This is a dual-purpose drawing. You're also using it for parochial school.
And we're just starting the rendering. I thought too. So you can see we've got shadows in the buildings of the sun. In this rendering, it's not the sun coming in and it's getting reflected on that. So I'll tell Tim it's higher.
Because will that flashing material around that deck B metal then? Or what will that material be that will wrap around there?
Probably metal.
Probably will be metal.
Typically is metal and it would probably be a darker color.
So in the morning, we may have a cross.
And there is a little outdoor patio then?
Yes, I was just gonna point out, we're showing some seating on this outdoor patio. So the entry comes up, the wide sidewalk, we've got patio, you know, around these columns and then wrapping underneath this balcony, so outdoors seating. So if students want to come out to eat outside for lunch or you have a class out there, a lot of different things you can do with that space. We're currently showing a door coming out of the cafe area on the first floor to have access to the screen space. We may or may not have that door there. There's certainly access off to the right of the screen for students to come out that door as well. So that's under review right now.
And the railings will just be a powder coated? Are we just doing a rock, a power coated metal or not a solid panel or anything?
Yeah, they'll be like, no, I'm just gonna powder coated, yeah. All the materials, we're trying to specify things that are on maintenance or no maintenance. There's always some maintenance settings that you need to do, sealants and those kinds of things. But our goal is always to have at least a 15- to 20-year life for any product before it really requires serious maintenance. Wood is probably gonna be the one thing that requires more maintenance and we're really doing a decision on whether we want a weathering wood that you don't have to do anything to, or what kind of finish goes on it that you have to maintain, what's the schedule of that maintenance?
Albert Lee would be a good example because we'd looked at that school and it was built in...
Two thousand.
Two thousand. And it looked...
Brand new.
Brand new. It was amazing.
Yeah, it's usually really selective in our specifications about what, what the finishes are in some of those things. Let's go, let's go to the other side of the building.
Will the concrete, are we doing any concrete stamping or anything? Or is it just solid and we're just...
Slide over to the right a little.
I don't, we don't have that planned right now. We can look at it and see...
Just do straight.
Just right over there.
I didn't, haven't opened the outside one yet. So can you go to the yellow bag? So on the other side, we're, this is the, the entry on the west. So right now, this is the secondary entrance to the commons. We're still trying to figure out exactly how much we wanna build on this entrance now, how much we wanna wait into on phase two. We want it to be something where you know it's an entrance, but without spending too much to make it a wild thing. So this side is really kind of in development still to find what's that balance and angle from there. But you can see the same materials, this darker gray, which would be a metal panel, which would be like a horizontal ribbed pattern. This smooth kind of orange color and then that kind of limestone color. We'll do some, probably do some kind of columns and then the overhead just for some protection from the weather on that side. And then you can see on the learning studios, these are going to the individual labs. So that all the labs will be daylit. And then we'll have controls on the lighting with sensors so that the lights inside the classroom go down as the daylight levels increase and vice versa. It's a great way for energy saving.
Do you wanna briefly touch on the white group meeting today? And, you know, we didn't stick around for all of it, but the little bit I saw with how they, they look at everything in this project and talk about the energy efficiencies with it, how that somewhat affects it.
Yeah, so the Mid-America Energy Rebate Program, we enroll the school project into that program. So the white group is the engineering group that, that performs that service for Mid-America Energy. So this is completely free to the district to go through this process. And the goal is to achieve greater than 15% energy efficiency over a baseline model. And so as you achieve 15% and higher, you earn energy rebates based on how much energy you're saving through putting in certain design measures. So that's in mechanical systems, electrical systems, the architectural systems and lighting. So those kind of key four areas. They look at, they divide the building into kind of the classroom section, a common section, a gymnasium section. Because typically those are all, have different heating systems with different ventilation systems because they have a different heat use. So today we sat down and met with them for our first of two meetings. They basically modeled in bundles, what they call bundles. So bundle number one is everything that we have planned for your building. Bundle number two is everything we have planned to kind of upgrade it to the next energy savings level and bundle three goes even higher. So with the calculations that we did today in the meeting, we finished them up after you guys had to step out. The estimated, really roughly estimated rebate amount was somewhere between $65,000 and $70,000 for bundle one. Bundle two was $75,000, $78,000, and bundle three was just under $100,000. So between this meeting and the next meeting, we'll go back and make sure that everything they have modeled is what we are showing in the design and check calculations and check R-values and systems, get that back to them. And then we'll come back at our second meeting in six weeks or whatever it is, kind of refine that. So we've gotta wait for KCL to finish the design work that they're doing before we can put those numbers in that they can give you an estimated rebate value. And they'll then verify after the building is built. So just the base model that we're talking about is gonna earn you a rebate of some kind, which is great. And we can look at, what is the first cost of some of those bundle two, bundle three upgrades? If it's gonna cost you, you know, $400,000 more, then maybe after something you wanna spend money on. But they can give you projections for how much money you're saving in operating costs every year going forward, which is pretty powerful information to have. So it's a great program to be able to take advantage of. We're gonna talk about schedule. I think I've put updated schedules. These are your stats, making it, doing an early bid package possibly for some of the civil work and some foundation work. So we're working with Estes on that. We're still looking at going out for bids around June 9th, June 10th. Starting construction, well, continuing construction. We'll do a little bit of package this summer, finishing up the summer of 2016. So we'll flesh out some of those intermediate board meeting dates as we go. Typically what we do is we come back at 25% construction documents, 50% construction documents, you know, cause monthly and give you updates. But as we make design changes or developments, we'll certainly bring those back and make sure we get your approval. And as Danielle starts selecting more interior finishes, those kinds of things, we will, we'll give you updates.
You can do the whole thing in 12 months.
That's a good question for Paul. So Paul, we heard here from Estes, we, we brought this email in.
We're not presenting tonight, but typically when we get to the stage, you know, we're almost with design development, now we're gonna be looking at the budget again. So we're gonna take the deck that the LDD created, plus the consultants, and look at it again and compare that to where we were at the beginning of design. So each part of the way, we keep doing head checking, comparison back, make sure we stay on track, that's what we're doing. But I wanted you to, it's not only here to discuss my birthday, I know it's really special. I brought, you know, since we're taking your vision, we're gonna take that. Next big step is construction. We're gonna be seeing some more faces from Estes. Some of those you may have seen already, Pete Perez is here. Pete's here, pre-construction manager, he's been working on budgets and working closely with the LDB to make sure we stay in that alignment. He's gonna be concerned to do that, and he's in the DD now. Scott Schiller, you probably haven't talked to him yet, but Scott's your project manager and he's gonna be here during construction. But he starts getting involved now so he knows what's going on as we get to that point. But he's a close neighbor, he lives in Mason City, so it makes a lot of sense for him to be, you know, here a lot while we go through pre-con parts. So you'll see him a lot. And as we get further on, you'll see more other people, contract administrators, project engineers, things like that. So you need more people, but these guys will be pretty clear when we get to construction part. So just wanted to introduce those guys. Right now, Scott's been working on the schedule. We've been taking the, the kind of rough numbers, the rough ideas we've been looking at for 12 months. That seems to make sense for the size of the project that we're building. But he's gonna be working into making that more detailed as we get further into the design. So we'll be keeping, as we update the budget, we'll be also updating that schedule, making sure, right now, we're really concentrating on the pre-con part of how we get to construction. That's where we're focusing most of our efforts, keep that in track. And then further down the line, get a design, we'll be updating that construction project. So we know there's gonna be some phasing. We know we have some things that we have to work around for school and we're kind of working into that now. So Scott's been nosing around here and looking at things and trying to figure that out. So we'll see more of him doing that too. That's our best guess right now, so we'll be ready to move forward.
Any other questions?
One thing I wanted to go back to is, first of all, everything that you picked looks beautiful. And I really like all of the colors and, and the finishes. And you guys did a, a good job, put a lot of thought into it. And I think you heard some of our comments along the way as we've visited schools because I see some of that being included. But I, I think that the, the process and psychology of design and color is really interesting. And in this lead piece that we all got in our packets that talks about the colors that you've picked, you know, there's, there's a piece in there that I think is important for the public to know. And that is that, you know, it's not just that you picked these random colors because you like them, but there's a lot of psychology that has gone into this where 10,000 children were found in middle school, that they, they gravitate to those secondary colors. And so that's what you've honed in on. And, and so that's what you're wrapping their school in. And I think that's important to pick the colors that they want rather than what I want, or Robin wants, or Terry wants. And, you know, we, we might have a whole lot of different ideas about that. But you're, you're going right to the research to, to build this school and to design it. And yet, on the other hand, I wonder how timeless will these colors be over a period of time? You know, we, we know how colors kind of come in and out with trends and, and... So it's, it's, it's something that I, I question. You know, we don't want it to look like, oh gosh, you know, the, the rust and avocado of the 60s and 70s, you know? But I'm sure you guys have an eye, an eye for that and, and have that into consideration as well. Can, can you speak to that at all?
Some of the importance there is, some of the importance there is picking your hard surface in neutral tones. And then your colors become things that are taken care of by a gallon and a roller. So you put these colors in with a gallon and a roller and they become timeless because they can be changed.
Yeah, exactly, exactly that. And, you know, if we do these colors in environmental graphics, your graphics are probably gonna need to change in 20 years. So there'll be time to update the color scheme at that point as well.
Right.
So, you know, it's applying these colors smartly and the things that are going to last life of the building be more timeless because of colors and neutrals, yeah.
Yes, okay. So we will need to reinvest in 20 years in some new paint and finishes.
Probably before that.
Perhaps, yeah.
Some will wear out if you want to...
Yes.
And we'll do, we'll do a couple more color studies, I think, on the exterior too. In gap, physical samples of some of the colors that we're proposing. Right now, you know, we just have some paint samples and stuff. But we'll order physical samples of everything so that we can bring it. And if you don't like something, we'll change it. It's okay to speak up on that. You know, one thing that we talked about today that I didn't mention as we were going through was doing kind of what we're calling a fitness trail through the school. Do you wanna talk a little about that and I'll pull up the plan that matches it? So we're looking at outside of the studio spaces in the main commons and in that corridor that kind of becomes the cafe area, creating a loop that goes kind of... The overall? The overall plan. Okay. And so it would go down this corridor and then you could go up the stairs and go across on the second floor and come back down. This, this main stair and do a loop then. We need to study, you know, how many laps makes a mile or that kind of a thing. But having stations throughout the path, so maybe here you stop and do a yoga pose or over here you stop and do a wall sit. Or working in ways that talk about nutrition and hydration, maybe by the water fountains, talking about balance, flexibility, strength, agility. And maybe that becomes part of the floor pattern in some way too. You know, maybe there's a section where there's a stripe on the floor and they can do the line hop. Or maybe there's a few dots and they can do the different...
Hopscotch.
Agility, agility. And so the environmental graphics will work into that a little bit too as an informational, educational piece to help the kids, okay, well, I'm on the trail, so this is how you do a wall sit. Or, you know, something to that effect that doesn't require equipment but still enforces that healthy lifestyle. And with keeping it outside of the studios, you know, in this loop, it can be something that's open to the public. It could be a community feature that could be shared by everyone.
Well, not to mention that we've all learned too that, you know, through activity, it stimulates the brain, stimulates learning too. So I think that's great.
Yeah, the PE teacher is fine and the brain breaks.
And the one feature that is in the commons?
The highly controversial climbing wall. We're still investigating what that might be. Is that something that we look at for the future? What are the insurance requirements? Are there ramifications to that? Maybe it's more of a traverse, traverse wall that's low and you, it's still rock climbing, but you go more sideways. So we're still investigating that. We'd love to see that incorporated as part of the fitness trail and to have that feature. There's been, I was looking at the Seth P., which is the Council for Educational Facility Planning International, the Canadian McConnell Awards every year, which are highly prestigious awards. And there are schools that have the climbing wall and the slide and, you know, a lot of the stuff that we're talking about, decentralized dining. You know, and they're, they're doing it. So it's being done, just not very many places right now. So, you know, one of those things that we'd love to, love to see incorporated as part of that wellness, you know, experiential kind of school project, so.
I'd like to go back to, we were talking about the white group in Mid-America and the rebates and the three tiers. At one time, I'd asked about ICF walls, the insulated concrete form walls.
Okay.
Is there any cha- would that be possible? I know there's a, there's a cost, but will that probably be in that third tier? So that, that is an option we could...
No, really, all the tiers have to do with the architecture, architectural features is what is the R-value of the wall system? What is the R-value of the roof? What are the window materials made of? So what we're, what we're showing is... So, what we're showing is a steel frame building with a structural insulated panel, so it's a sandwich panel, similar to that except it has wood on the outside and inside, and then like five and a half inches of insulation in the middle. So, really, it's the best way to insulate, this continuous insulation all around the envelope of your building. You can get it six inches, eight inches, 10 inches, four inches, we're looking at doing six inches, because that gives us our required R value. It's really easy to install them, Estes and the LDD have done a lot of projects, they're a really economical way to get a building built, it's quick, and you get that fantastic R value. So, in the bundle, bundle one, we have our six inch insulated wall panels, and our value is like 25 or 26. Bundle number three, we bumped that up to an eight inch panel, you know, which has more insulation in it. So, as far as, you know, the concrete insulated panels versus the wood insulated panels, you know, they basically do the same thing, and I think the wood, correct me if I'm wrong, the wood steps panels are cheaper, we can do that, so.
I know that there's some cheaper, there's some structural value in obviously a concrete poured wall. Is that even something we can look at for the gymnasium, as opposed to looking at the block? That would give us our safe room in a decent size like Waverly did. No, that's.
Yeah, we've done precast concrete engines before, and I think the one thing about making it more a safe room is that you typically have to eliminate all your daylighting, you know, windows, skylights, all of that, which would be a downside to that. We are looking at trying to do the media labs as more of a hardened space, not as being a safe room per se. We can look and see what that extra cost would be to make it an official safe room, but we're looking at trying to provide some hardened spaces within the studios, and then we can look at the locker room areas and see if there's an easy way to do that, because we've already got a precast concrete lit on the benches sit on. So, we're still looking at places where we could have those safe rooms, but still have a gymnasium that's well lit.
Sure.
And similar spaces like that. So, I'll get back to you on that at the next board meeting about what we're able to do and how many people we can sit in each space.
Didn't independents have their safe room in their locker rooms?
Yes, they did.
So.
It's pretty typical. Right now, we've got some windows in the locker rooms to get daylight, you know, they're up really high, so you can't see into the locker rooms. So, we can look and see, is that something we want to eliminate those windows, do we put the shutters in, you know, if we want to make that more of a hardened space.
You talked briefly about the lockers, about these light plastic, maybe roll them around, because there must be a difference in physical size of lockers, and I think the first thing that really looks kind of shabby is when the kids can't get their coats and their boots and everything in the locker, and they're hanging half open, and they're hanging out through doors that aren't shut right.
Right.
And I think while we're doing it, we just go get a good, big, get the big lockers instead of the little one.
I think, are we telling you what size, what are they expecting? I think the studio lockers are 15s. So, 15 inches wide, about 15 inches deep, which is a little bit bigger than a typical locker, which could be nine inches or 12 inches. And then, three feet, two and a half to three feet high, so it should be big enough to get your whole coat in there. We all know that the middle schoolers are kind of notorious for not being particularly tidy and neat and careful. There's really so much we can do, but they are a little bit bigger.
And then, the next comment I had was, I was very, I kind of disappointed, I think, when you showed us the backside of the school, because all the time, I was looking at seeing a lot more glass, and I was concerned about that the last time you were here, because I asked you about the insulation factors and stuff with the glass, and now it just kind of looks to me like there isn't as much glass as I expected to see on the backside.
Like in the commons, or the gym, or just.
Well, that picture you showed from the back really didn't, you know, showed all, I would say it's probably two-thirds, two-thirds of that wall was metal or brick, and the rest of it was glass, and I just thought it'd be more 50/50 at least.
Okay.
That's one thing, comment I had to make, but I don't know if that's very important now, but I just, I was, I guess I was looking for a lot more glass than from what we talked earlier.
Jean, do we still have our hallway, our glass hallway that goes to the north wing?
In phase two.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that'll really need to be glass, especially when it passes by the learning studios, because that's the daylight for those classrooms along that side, so when we get to that point, we'll have to make sure that we are allowing that natural light to get through there.
Yeah.
And there's ways you can direct light deeper into a space with kind of a light shelf that kind of has blades on it that are curved, that will bounce the light deep into a space. We're investigating those for, we're investigating, maybe trying to use those in these, in these windows here, to shine, to get daylight deep into the teachers' planning areas. We do have some windows on that side of the teachers' planning offices to get that daylight deeper into them. So, we're looking at it to see, but that would probably be a good solution for getting light from, through that corridor, deep into those spaces.
Are the roofs as flat as they look like they are?
The roofs are a quarter inch, foot foot slope, except for the main commons area, which is, I'm not sure, 11, 112 maybe, and probably.
You're going to look the other way.
So, you have a structural, you have a structural slope of a quarter inch, quarter inch per foot. So, yes, they look flat, but they're not flat. Coat minimum is much, is actually like an eighth inch, but if less than that, we never, we'll never do less than a quarter inch, sometimes a little bit more. There will be some sections, I think, we're trying to get all of the, all of the roofs to kind of the same, the same plane, just to simplify construction, so you don't have a lot of up and down. So, there may be some areas that are slightly deeper than that, so it's a low slope roof.
Okay, as long as it, low slope enough that it pockets and holds water up there. Okay.
Any other questions for the team? If not, this is an action item this evening as well, if there's a motion.
I move to approve the B L D D design as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the design as presented. Any further discussion?
Well, there are a few modifications.
There's going to be modifications until we move in, I'm guessing.
Slight tweaks.
We're just approving each step of the way.
Perfection.
So, if no other discussion, we'll have roll call vote, please.
Frisbee?
Frisbee.
Maycomber?
Yes.
Winery?
Yes.
Dyke?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Motion carries, 5 to 0. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, when are you planning on coming back to us again?
We'll be back in two weeks to present the budget. Estes will primarily leave that, but people will try and have somebody here as well to answer questions.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Scott, thanks, Pete, thanks, Paul.
Moving on to agenda, item six, election timeline. Dr. Cox?
Yeah, Matt Gillespie was here two weeks ago and talked to you about the physical plant equipment levy and the instructional support levy. The I S L is up in 2017, and the Pebble is up in 2020, and you can put those before the public at any point. So, you need to start thinking about when you would like to, if you would like to take those issues to the public again, and then what the timeline might be for that. There's a handout with some information in your packet as well.
Any thoughts or comments by board members on how we should proceed?
Any advice or direction to separating the two, doing the two at the same time? Is that historically how it's been done?
Was that, I'm sorry.
Doing the Pebble and the instruction.
I don't know if there's any historical trend that to follow, but what makes sense for us, I guess, we don't have to do them together, they expire at different times, but there is some efficiencies to doing them both at the same time. You have a lot of options.
Well, I've had a lot of, a lot of people ask me about it this last week, based on whatever they read in the paper, but I got to make sure that I'm understanding this right, that the Pebble that we're under now won't expire till 2020, is that correct? And then, if we pass another one, that's good for another 20 years?
10.
10, okay. And that would look good to have that in our portfolio, that we've passed it for another 10th, though. Okay. Because I know a lot of the things, well, I thought you weren't going to raise the taxes, I saw this was not a raising taxes, just to carry on on what we had prior, we just wanted to extend it.
It's a lot of education, I think it's going to have to go on.
Yeah, there's a lot of people misunderstanding the whole situation.
They're not understanding it at all.
That's right.
And the education of what this pays for specifically, buses, maintenance and upkeep on our other buildings, those kinds of things.
Technology.
Technology, very important education pieces, and it absolutely is not an increase in the taxes, it's what's been carried forward for many years here.
At the present time, we're not asking to increase anything, we're just asking to pass it on for another 10 years.
And this allows us to have money come in from other districts that are more, how do I want to say, economically rich, as far as more sales, there are more sales tax.
More sales tax rich.
Property rich.
Property rich. Because Iowa spreads it around equally, but you're only going to get part of that pot if you have the Pebble in place, so.
That's actually to do with the sales tax. Pebble, yeah, the board approves the rate.
Generated by our total assessed values.
Right. You know, and then we still have a bond that we've been talking about for phase two, and I think we should keep this as simple as possible, and, you know, maybe Pebble and I S L at one time and a bond at another time.
Yeah.
You know, I think that keeping.
They're so distinctly different that the education will be substantially different, and I think that, yeah, there's no reason to cause any more confusion than necessary.
Dr. Cox, do you know the dates that we can have his election?
Yes, we printed that out for you, so in that exhibit, you'll see there are four election dates per year. I don't know that I have it in front of me.
April 7th, June 30th, September 8th, February 2nd.
There we go.
So, in an odd numbered year, it's February, April, June, and September. And an even numbered year would be February, April, September, December. Is that correct? You got it up?
Yes. Yep.
Well, I guess what I'm wondering is, if we're looking at setting a date to have this, I think we need to have some time to, I mean, I wouldn't want to set the closest one coming up. I think we need to have some time to educate the public on what it's for and what we're doing with it. So, I think, you know, probably the earliest would be September, I would think, but that's either, that's my thoughts.
And I even support that after the first of the, the end of the early 16, leaving yourself, you know, one, two, three dates between the time of that one, and then also when the instructional support levy would expire, just as a buffer type of thing.
I would agree with you.
So, if it would fail at one vote, when could it be brought up again? Do we have to wait six months?
120-day wait for.
On the I S L?
On the I S L, and the Pebble doesn't have a wait.
Doesn't have a wait, okay.
On a failed vote.
Personally, I've heard good support, I mean, especially when you express what this money goes to, and like you said, the education part of it, everybody seems to understand that, you know, that I've, and I've bounced it off of a lot of people that I run into and talk about this stuff with, and it's far so good, but like I said, there's going to need to be substantial amount of education going on.
Yeah, just what I was saying earlier, I had a lot of comments that were kind of negative, so I tried to explain to them that this was just an extension of what we've already got in place.
Absolutely.
And then they felt better about it.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
And I think, you know, to your point too, Jason, we've got a school board election in September, I think separating all of these as much as possible is wise.
Don't, I would not put this in September with the school board election either, because people will not.
No, you can't put it in with that.
They'll get it confused again.
So, you're potentially looking at the February 2nd of 16 or April 5th of 16?
Let's say that February.
February.
February 1.
Or you wait until the new school opens, let people come in, walk around, see it, feel it, experience it?
That would be the September of 16 or December of 16.
Right.
When was the?
And for I S L, then that becomes cutting it close.
Very close.
So, we probably should go.
I had the same thought, but that was my only concern.
I think we better not cut it that close.
February 2nd is probably, knowing that you may have to go to a second, which would bring you into September.
So, later this fall in September or October, we can revisit this issue to see where we're at?
Looks like you have a deadline, December 18th, to set the February election dates, and this fall will be appropriate.
So, September or October?
Yeah, start talking about it.
After the public election in September.
But I think we should start a program of educating the public before then. Can't wait till after September, December to start educating them for February election, we need to be educating them this summer.
Will they remember?
Memories don't last in these types of things more than a couple of weeks, so.
Yeah, well, maybe, I don't know.
Unless you want to do a dry run in June, and then.
If there's a consistent pattern of presenting information to the public, as Jim's suggesting, from the fall until February.
Yes.
Things ought to be fine.
And I think it's really important that day to day, as we're all out, that we're spreading accurate information, just like you said, Jim, to seek the clarification and that these are the facts. Can you give kind of, you know, of course, I think I'm much more familiar with the physical plant equipment levy, can you give a quick I S L, where those dollars go?
Well, you can do it different ways. Right now, our I S L resolution is 7% of the general program cost. What we, in the ballot, when it was voted, 3% of it can be used for really anything, so wages, and the other 4% is for supplies, equipment. Now, a lot of schools might do it all general use. We've had it where we've designated it for supplies rather than, and then carried over amounts that we haven't used from year to year. But it really is, however you want to word the resolution, it could change.
I think people have comfort in knowing where that money is going, is a big thing. Like I said, with the P P E L, the bus thing, the technology, the other buildings are big, big things.
The buses and technology, we tend to pay from Pebble and sales tax.
If both of these are simple majority, correct? 50% plus one.
But I'm thinking, like Terry said, I like the idea of putting it into maybe two different items at least, or three, because I'm sure we're going to need some different supplies, different than what we've had, with this new change in the 21st century educational public, require some different changes as we go on, you know, more than just the normal.
If there is a more efficient way than, as we've had in the past, certainly look at that.
So, let's let our administrative team take a look at what they think we might need for the future, and come back to us maybe in April or May with an update, so that we can keep the message out and move forward. Does that sound agreeable? Okay, ready to move on? Number seven, early retirement applications and resignations.
We received four applications for early retirement. They came from Mickey Bartelt, Donna Council, Terry Turner, and Robin Kruger, and administration recommends that the board accept the four applications for early retirement. On behalf of the board and the community, administration expresses deep gratitude and appreciation to the staff members for their tireless work on behalf of the students of the Charles City Community School District.
the Charles City Community School District.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the retirement applications, and I'd like to second Dr. Cox's thoughts on, that's a substantial number of years for those four people to be in here, and we really appreciate what they've did for us, so.
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the four early retirement applications. Any further discussion?
Question?
Hearing none, we'll have roll call vote.
May Cumber? Yes. Wintery? Yes. Deit?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Frisbee?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero, and the district does appreciate their years of service. Number eight, cost-saving measures. I believe this is you again, Dr. Cox.
Yes, so I wanted to go through each of the cost-saving measures that are being recommended to you tonight. We're looking to cut just over $300,000 from the general fund. Under the early retirement section, we anticipate saving $135,929, accepting the application from Terry Turner. It's funded by Title I, so there's no general fund savings there. The position held by Mickey Bartelt, we will replace her with a less experienced teacher. From Donna Council, the recommendation is to transfer Amanda Romeller, she's certified K-6, to place her into an elementary position. And then for Robin Kruger, the recommendation is to make Tia McEnroy, who currently is .57 at the high school, make her a full-time K, or excuse me, 612 art teacher, and then eliminate that halftime position. And with realigning the duties between the middle school and high school, we can still maintain programming at both levels, and that's where the 136,000 basically comes from. The additional cuts that are being recommended, eliminate the extended contract for curriculum, reduce, reduction in force of the curriculum instructor, reducing the extended contract for technology from 23 days to 10 days, reduction in force of the ninth grade girls' basketball coach, reduction in force seventh grade wrestling coach, reduction in force of the department chairs, reducing the long-term subbing rate to BA Step One, elimination of one bus route, the reduction in force of 612 social studies at the high school, eliminating the CCAP program at the high school, reduction in force of the CCAP teacher and the instructional assistant, reduction in force of the shared math teacher with Nashville Plainfield, and reduction in force of high school library associate, which comes to $158,568, total savings of $294,497. On the front page of that document, you have some information about the swimming pool. The projected savings from the general fund for the pool itself were basically $60,000. That was the low figure out of three that we had. The reduction in force for swimming and diving as a school-sponsored activity would be $6,000. And then there are some items that come from either pebble or sales tax that are between 49 and 55,000. We've listed the low end for those things, so a pool cover, ADA lifts, a tank, motor, a pool heater, $114,000 of estimated pool expense, and that's for the board to decide, do you want to maintain the pool for another 12 months, and problem solve how to go forward with that, with the city and with the Y? Or would you like to include that in the list of projected cuts?
Didn't you, I wanna make sure I understand our conversation the other day?
Yes.
That, didn't you tell me that we could still have the girls' swimming team, that they could practice at the Y, we just wouldn't be able to have any home meets?
Yes, so if you said, no, we don't wanna cut swimming and diving, we certainly could have an arrangement with the YMCA where the swim team would practice there, and all of their meets would be on the road, and wouldn't have any home swimming meets.
It was also expressed to me that the Y director said that that's essentially how their program would operate as well, that they would not be cutting their program. It would turn into somewhat a traveling program, which apparently, there are other districts or Ys in our region or area that operate that way already.
Well, I guess I have two mixed, or not two mixed emotions, but two thoughts on it, I guess. One of them is, if we close it now, we're gonna be able to take care of these girls with their swimming by having them practice at the Y and put them out on the road, I mean, there wouldn't be any home situations. And when we vacate this building a year from this fall, we're gonna be closing the pool anyway if somebody hasn't taken it over by then, so I can't see why we not wanna save that $65,000 as quick as we could, or what the total dollars that we're talking about here. That's my opinion, but I'm not, I was, felt different about it when I thought we was gonna have to eliminate the girls' swimming team totally, but if we could still have a team and they can travel and just won't have any home, I feel better about closing.
And they may wanna investigate if it's preferable to share with an adjacent district to that arrangement, I mean, that may be an option too to look at, but, you know, I had the same opinion, Jim, I mean, I said before that I valued much of our staff and that over the pool, which I still, I can still stand by. But with that, I think we've also started the conversation with some other entities in town that are, that have started to at least look at it, had the conversation, so, you know, that's, there's kind of two things there where I think that they start to understand that it's an expense that we generate no revenue from. Currently, we've put the entire bill for the pool, and that as we continue this conversation, if there's a way to somewhat mitigate that, that may be an opportunity to continue the pool now that's putting the entire bill. If that doesn't come about, then, you know, like you said, I still support our staff and the educational product that we put out versus operating the pool.
Do we need to give the public more time, let them, let our, how do we go about letting our feelings as a board know that what you just said, Jason, would also be my view? Jim has expressed his, Lorraine Scott could express theirs. If we're all in favor of yes, letting the pool go, can we give the public a few more months if they do, as one spoke of, looking for grants, or if the Y wants to investigate, or the Park and Rec Board was just here, I believe, last week and looked at that? Do we allow some time for them to have an option to decide, knowing we've made a decision though?
And that's been part of my motivation for starting the conversation, is to continue that, hopefully find a resolution.
But do we need to, as a board, make some type of decision so that they realize that that's the decision we're making?
How much time are you thinking? Well, let me back up. I will say that I agree with, the three of you have already spoken, that we need to move forward and save some money sooner than later. So with that said, how much time are we thinking, and when would this decision have to be made? Dean, did you have a question or a comment?
Just a comment. I met, or I worked with the Park Board last week at the chair of the revitalization committee. I toured the pool with the Park Board last week, and I told them, and then I also told, mentioned to Jason and to Lance, that I guess I would like those three groups, the Park Board, your board, and the Y board, to think what their long-term desires are for the pool situation in Charles City, not just this pool, but our three pools. How can we make the most effective use of those three pools, whether that's one pool, two pools, three pools, a whole new pool, whatever that may be? And so I've asked those groups to discuss that in the next month, in the first of March. What I'd like to do is get the representative from your board, probably Dr. Cox and Jerry Mitchell, Lance and representative of his board, Bob Cloverdan, Steve Lindman, and Steve Deers, get those three together in one room and kind of discuss the long-term plans for Charles City pools. So I think, you know, whatever you decide is, you know, fine for the short term, I guess I'd like to have you kind of think long-term, what you wanna have happen for the next 10 years as far as the pool goes, is it just gonna sit empty and be filled in with water or cement? And, you know, what is the long-term plan, I guess? I know you have a short-term decision to make as far as what you wanna do with this current budget here, but I guess the long-term plan, I'd like to have a meeting in the first part of March with those three groups and kind of have a brainstorming discussion, and then put that out to the public, like you say, so people can kind of weigh in on that.
Yeah. Thank you.
That sounds like a good option, and, you know, I think you wanna, you want us to vote on this at the next meeting, is that correct?
I had suggested the 23rd, but I forgot that Robin would be gone that night, so perhaps you wanna give it until March 16th?
March.
After spring break?
Yeah, let's do that.
When we have our first meeting in March?
That sounds good.
Would probably be a better time.
That sounds good. You know, I mean, I hear some frustration from folks about this pool, and it's underutilized, and, you know, it could be a revenue source, maybe, maybe not, you know, but, you know, and I hear from parents, well, you know, maybe we should open it up and charge for people to come in and use it. Well, you know, there's a whole lot of logistics involved in that, but if somebody can, or parents or community members can resurrect some type of a program like that, that can possibly make it something that we save, maybe so. But, you know, I agree with you, Jason, with what you've said, you know, in 2016, when we vacate this building, you know, keeping that pool filled is not gonna be our goal.
Well, we'll be looking at additional budget cuts again if...
If we're still...
We continue with the, with the agenda item coming up, if that becomes a reality, the 1.25, we're gonna be staring another set of, and definitely this...
How does that cut?
We won't much have a choice.
We won't. And the other thing is that part of the reason in moving forward for a single campus was the savings in operating expenses as well, and if we continue to maintain this building and we don't move it off of our balance sheet, then we still have the operating expenses of an empty building. And so, yeah, more budget cuts are ahead.
I can address some of what you were talking about with opening it up to the public.
Yes.
15 or 18 years ago, when I sat on this board before, we had open public swimming on Monday nights, and we paid a lifeguard to supervise the pool during those Monday night open swims, and we charged admission. The admission never was equal to or greater than the cost of the lifeguard fees that we paid to make sure that the pool area was safe and secure. And that was, at that time, the board looked at those numbers. We were trying to get the public to use the pool, it was in the paper quite a bit, and it didn't happen, so we shut down the public swimming on Monday nights because we were losing money on it.
Mm-hmm.
So in order for those types of things to happen, more groups, more people, more community members have to not only want it, they're going to have to do something about it.
Exactly, yeah. That's good history.
I wanna ask Dr. Cox, when would we, as a board, have to make up our mind to close it before, I mean, before we start another school year? By this spring?
The pool.
The pool.
It depends, are you talking about eliminating the swimming program as well?
Well, no, going ahead and having on the road and practice at the Y and whatever else. How long, I mean, do we got a date, date we've gotta make these decisions by?
No. If you were going to, you know, engage into a cooperative sharing agreement with swimming, then by the end of April, that has to be finalized. But if the team still is here and just uses the Y, then no, you can shut the pool down at any time.
You're talking about a cooperative agreement with another district?
Right.
Okay, then another question I'd like to present to Dean, or another thought, was there's two schools I know of in Davenport, Iowa, that when they rebuilt, they incorporated their YMCA with the school. That would, and if the city's having trouble with their pool, maybe the YMCA and the city all out of joint forces, and we could build one pool on Phase Two at the new high school, and that would give them use to the gymnasiums, the weight rooms, and whatever else that's up there, and be not duplicating those services in the community. So that was something that maybe you wanna think about or talk about when you get this group together. Just a thought.
It has a little bit.
Yeah, it has been talked about.
Those discussions have begun for long term. The question I have would be on the repairs and maintenance that need to be done, these ADA lifts, tank, motor, and pool heater, that work would need to be done this summer if we were to keep the pool open for next school year, yes?
Yeah.
Is that why it's on here?
It's on there as something that would need to be done.
And I agree with what Jim said earlier, if we're going to close the pool sooner rather than later, is, there's no reason to...
Spend any more money.
Waylay it, if that is what our intent is.
Dr. Cox is gonna take me on a tour down there, and he says, I'll take you down there, but you can't touch nothing because you don't know what's gonna break down. And he showed me some pictures, and after I've seen the pictures...
So I think we probably will make a decision in April, we'll see what happens in May.
The March 16th maybe?
March 16th, excuse me.
I don't think we should make that decision tonight, but I think...
No, this is just a...
Discuss it and think about it.
Discussion, exhibit, information item.
Okay.
So the consensus then would be that we would have this back on the agenda for March 16th for at least a first round of voting for budget cuts?
After Robin gets back, yep.
After Mrs. McCumber comes back?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So we'll have the administration put it on our agenda for March 16th.
I said, one other comment passed on to me that I felt had some merit, was the reduction in seventh grade wrestling coach, and although there's only 13 boys out, you know, some, you know, concerns of liability with that, maybe that sport, and just one adult with the kids, and in the contact they may have, so I don't know if that was not necessarily, you know, a coach, but maybe a supervisor-type position or whatever. I don't know if we have that with some of the other sports with a lot of kids out, but maybe it's not a concern, but I had that one addressed to me by a concerned parent, I think it was, so, that if we're having that kind of sport, and I think we actually, we have a girl out for wrestling now, and if there were to be more in the future, some sort of the mixing there, you know, with the potential for liability concerns or whatever, so I thought I'd pass that along, but...
Something to keep in mind.
I would contend with 13 kids.
It's tough to...
One coach is sufficient.
I agree. And I definitely agree in all of the other sports. Like I said, the way it was presented to me was the best sport specifically.
Are volunteers able to work?
Yes. And so that could be an option as well.
Another question I wanted to ask, and I'm sure you've checked into it, Dr. Cox, but by closing one of the bus routes, that's not gonna make, I'm sure there must be a legal time that the buses, only kids can only be on the bus so long?
Right.
You've checked into the fact that by eliminating one bus, won't get into a problem with having them on the buses too long?
I have not, but Jerry has.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, that's all I need, you know?
I guess the other thing is if, you know, there is this, if the decision did come to close the pool and that $60,000 is realized, then what else on this list would come off of the list, I guess? A recommendation from you, if there are things that, if there are things that you would recommend that we continue either way with, or if that would save something off of this list, conversation too?
I'm comfortable with the recommendation as presented, knowing just as what Robin has mentioned, that if 1.25% supplemental state aid does go through, and we don't have the increase in enrollment that is projected from our enrollment study, I don't wanna be back here at this point next year doing the same thing. There are some cuts being recommended, and obviously, any cut is painful because we wouldn't have it if we didn't need it, but I'm comfortable with what's being recommended moving forward in this uncertain time with the legislature.
And that would also go to say that the $198,000 of items that you've removed from recommendation would just be put on a shelf and probably be first thing to be brought out next year or considered by administration?
Potentially could be considered next year.
Yeah.
If we're in the same position, yes.
I would just like to make a comment that it looks like you did a lot of, burned a lot of midnight oil making these decisions and looking into them in depth, and I think you did a good job.
Thank you.
We'll lose no full-time teaching positions, am I correct?
No, that's the real benefit.
So we're cutting no full-time positions. Very well done.
It's a reorganization of teaching positions.
It's a lot of, like, I like what Jim said, that's a lot of effort, good effort. Thank you.
So I'll ask the administration to put that on the March 16th agenda for action, and we'll move on to Agenda Item 9, 500 North Grand Revitalization Team.
I didn't know if Dean wanted to speak, but I just intended to give an update on our last meeting and how many of you had read the paper or got comments from the last article in the paper, you know, that did a pretty good job of capturing really what the conversation that went on. To bring you up to speed a little bit, we've met, and previously, we had, as we talked about, developed a former, a smaller subcommittee to task with coming up for a request proposal to be sent out. Seeking, you know, what that would seek is kind of been what we've been working to define. Thoughts that that would seek would be a professional to work to pull together the project of repurposing this building that would be obviously a paid position. But also, what we've also talked about is the concept of, you know, within that proposal, seeking proposals or requests, seeking proposals of what people would propose to use the building for. And I guess that conversation kind of elevated a little bit as, you know, as we talked about with the, as you read the paper, the Fauch Brothers' presentation, or a gentleman that came and kind of informally met with us and walked through the building and gave us some insight from him on how his company operates. It really started my wheels spinning further about, you know, with him out there, how many others are out there similar, and how we can work through this process to make sure that we reach as many of those as possible. You know, along with that, we talked about the concept that's come up more recently is the, and if Dr. Cox would like to speak to it to any more length, you're welcome, but the Career Academy that could be potentially hosted in this facility, do you want to give a brief? I don't know if we've talked about that here much.
I've mentioned it briefly in superintendent comments for the past, I don't know, three months maybe, and I'm not ready to share anything additionally tonight other than I'm working with the president at NIAC on getting a meeting here in Charles City that will involve business partners, some NIAC personnel, and some school personnel on this concept. But refining it into what we're asking for first is step number one, and then we'll have the meeting with NIAC.
And to build on that, we've had some expression from local legislators of great support in the concept, which I think is very promising, that both Republican and Democrat have expressed great support in supporting this project at the Capitol level. So that was very encouraging to me, I thought, which hopefully bring some of that together. But the concept being potentially this building housing a portion of that project, towards all of that project, so. As a group, as we go forward, and I don't know, Dean, did you want to speak at all, or do you have anything to add?
Covered it pretty well.
Come on up to the mics for the TV audience.
Yeah, I think Jason covered it pretty well. The one thing that we recognize, I think, is that this building is too large to have one single purpose. You know, what we're talking about now, the proposal we have in the meeting, and like Dr. Cox said, are very preliminary at this point with the housing and with the academy both, but they're both show some good uses if they would, you know, go forward, so. But I think that's the biggest thing that we realize is that the other facilities that we've gone and looked at are 50,000, 60,000 square feet, we're talking about 160,000 square feet. There's no one entity that's going to be able to utilize that much space. So it's going to have to be a combination of different uses. And like Jason said, we talked about having a professional developer to kind of help us through this process, rather than having it be a committee that meets once a month and says, "Well, let's get together next month." And talk about it again, and pretty soon you've gone for six months, you haven't really done much. But we think we're to the point where we have these two possible options that we think hiring somebody to look for other options is not really very beneficial at this point. That may be still the direction we end up going, but I think for now, we're kind of thinking, let's explore the options that have been presented to us and go from there. And that's it. We have also had another, besides the Fauch Brothers that looked at it for housing, we did have Revive that looked at it earlier for different uses, and so I think we have to keep all those options open at this point.
Yeah, and as I said, we're kind of in this, still in the development of this, you know, how we get that. Everything we've said into verbiage on a request or proposal is kind of where we're working through. I did speak with Carrie about this last week, was it? And she's provided some insight that I'll forward along, Dean, for our meeting. We plan to meet on Friday again, the smaller group, with the larger group meeting at the end of the month for updates, so. You know, I see the group, but I see the smaller group continuing to move forward. About the last meeting was very good. We had, like I said, the coverage in the paper was good. It gave a pretty good synopsis of what we spoke about, and promising, promising things really, in my opinion.
It's, as you all are well aware, and as we figured it would be, it's a slow process. It's a big crack, I guess, but we're trying to continue to move each meeting. I think we've moved forward one step, but there's a lot of steps to go yet, so.
The only comment that I've got to make is that people have asked me, and I said, "Well, I don't know because I'm not on that committee," but first off, when you were talking about hiring somebody to help you, but that wasn't what upset the people as most of us was, that the press printed that that guy suggested that maybe we was going to have to give the building away. And the public didn't like that, that we was going to, talking about giving it away. That's the only comment I got to make. And maybe I misunderstood it, maybe they did too, but that's a couple of comments that brought to me.
You're talking about the housing option, is that what you're talking about?
No, I think, sell it to me for a dollar, that one.
Yeah, buy it less, yeah.
And so...
I don't think, you know, again, that's way, way preliminary, I don't think there's any discussion on those.
Yeah, it was in the paper.
But I think that, you know, there may be some options that, you know, the building would be sold to someone else. If this Fauch Brothers things would go through, and again, there's a lot of steps to cross there, they would be the owners of that part of the building rather than, you know, somebody else. So the question became, you know, one of the questions asked at the last revitalization meeting was, who would be the owner if we had this academy? We don't know the answer to that yet, but that's one of the things that would have to be discussed and figured out for all the options, is who's going to be the owner, so. Lots of options, no answers yet.
Well, I got to give you credit, you did a good job because you've got a big project, like you said.
We're working at it anyway.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's, like I said, it's a big, complex project, but the last meeting, in my opinion, there was progress. And I have long been against the housing concept, you know, or the housing option, until I spoke with Mr. Fauch that was here and went through it, and, you know, it was, you know, somewhat captured in the press, but the way he explained things completely flipped my opinion on that. The first thing that those people, that their company does is they work to get the building on the National Historic Registry. So just one example of a commitment to this building and the long-term future of it in this district or in this community, even though it may become, you know, a housing or an apartment-type thing. Also, it was very explicitly stated that it's moderate to high-level housing. Absolutely no low-income housing was part of his talk. And as we walked through it, he pointed to things that, you know, as they get, you know, their historic registry completed, it opens themselves up for large amounts of grant money, which with the strings attached to that meant that the wood-framed chalkboards and the wood baseboard and all of the stuff that remains intact and all of that, so much of the historic nature of the building remains intact through this process, which, like I said, these are things that I didn't even know existed, or a company that I didn't know existed until we started this process. And the fact that we're this one step further along with it is great. Building on that with the RFP is that there may be 10 other companies out there that do similar or even better things. And how we capture this to give requests from them is what we're continuing to work through.
Yeah, it sounds great. Thank you very much.
I mean, that's always been, if you walk through the classrooms in this building, I mean, I hope that for this building, because there is as much architectural interest inside this building as there is outside, and for us to come in and gut this building completely and take out all that...
The character, yeah.
Would just be as bad as tearing it down.
Well, and last spring, when Iowa State University came through and toured the building with us, they were talking about all of the architectural features and whatnot, so.
There's beautiful things inside of this building that could be lost when we start gutting, if we would have had or started to get this.
I think besides being a school, oh, I think besides being a school, you know, being an apartment or condos or however it ends up being, is a good possibly secondary use. And, you know, I think the community could also use some new and improved apartment housing that is not low-income housing, and I believe there's a need for that in the community. I think it ups everybody's game that's out there in leasing, because I think there can be a lot of improvements in that direction for the community.
And just one more step with their presentation, you know, the gentleman that came talked about the auditorium, and, you know, the auditorium, they obviously can't make that into apartments, so that remains intact. He said they own, you know, they have auditoriums in many of the buildings that they've done this to that remains open to the public, the district, the school district for usage, that kind of stuff. They own and operate it, but it remains a, same with this type of space, will remain something for the community to use and open for events or whatever to make use of. Another big selling point.
Doug, go ahead.
I'll just make three points. We've been at this for over a year, and you're not any closer, in my estimation, to having a tenant come in here than you did 12 months ago, number one. Number two, if you're thinking of having someone come in and take over the building, hire a damn good lawyer, because if you're going to get rid of the building, you got to convey it. And you can't convey a building away with asbestos. So have a good lawyer. You've got asbestos floors and pipes, those are probably, you can remove it, but you've got asbestos in the outside walls here mixed in the plaster, because I talked to Roy Teague and some of the other ones. So you're going to have a very difficult time conveying the building away. The best scent you can hope for is you're going to be the landlord. And most landlords have to put money back in their business in order to rent it out. And back two years ago, we made a mistake as we went forward. You should have at all these times been working on a building up there and a design, and a design down here as a backup plan, could be LDD put structure into this early 21st century. And so far, everything I've seen them present, you can put in this building. So I'm at very little sympathy for where you're at at this point.
I'm not asking you for that.
I know that, I know that.
Thank you.
But I don't think you better expect the city or the Y to come to your help on this.
We're not, I don't think we mentioned the city or the Y, Dean, and what Dean just spoke about.
And I don't see anyone helping there, and I don't see any large businesses cutting in and actually taking the deed.
The price that associated with it was $24 million. You know, that was addressed, $23.8 million.
But you'll cut that back $10 million, just like you're cutting back expenses now and what you're building up there, you cut back to what you can afford.
Only spending on a boiler does nothing for the education of our children.
Building, putting in a lot of concrete footings doesn't advance the education of our children.
Nor does it lower my operating costs in the future, so when I don't have enough money to pay for the utility bills, it's not going to give me an end.
A year ago, you put together a budget that you were going to save $200,000 to $300,000, and that was to abandon this building. The last thing I heard, you're keeping the superintendent's office here, you're going to put the AKA in here, you're going to put the alternative school in here.
15,000 square feet, Doug.
But the point is you've still got the rest of the building, and I haven't heard of anyone that's going to take over the insurance, the utilities. You haven't addressed those holes in your budget. And you're going to try and start digging in six months or less, but you haven't taken care of this major problem. So when you go forward and ask the people, "Support us on Pebble, support us on instructional support items," they're going to say, "Wait a minute, are you being reckless in the way you're going forward because you haven't decided what you're going to do with this animal?" That's my point.
Thank you very much. We've been here for a little over two hours, and I see the next item could take 15 to 30 minutes. So we're going to take a short recess.
Thank you. Do I need to stand up?
Yep, and then we'll come back. We'll call a meeting back to order, and we are on Agenda Item 10, the IASB at the Board Table Workshop Advocacy. So I believe, Dr. Cox, this one is yours.
It is. So legislative advocacy, this session is worth three better boardsmanship credits, by the way.
I need them.
I know. And it is a 15 to 30-minute session that we'll go through. Kind of depends on how much you want to talk and contribute to it. So I will do a little bit of reading, I've handed out a part to each of you, and I'll explain it as we get to it. So an important influence on the future of your districts, and therefore, an important influence on the future of your district students, is the Iowa Legislature and the governor. Robin's already talked about the 1.25% supplemental state aid suggestion that has gone to the legislature. Republicans passed that, Democrats are working to pass a higher level. What can you do to influence their work? Excellent question. And what can you do, or what can your board do to make a powerful impact on the actions of legislators and the governor? Is this even possible? Well, IASB knows that local boards can make a difference. If we don't do anything, then IASB can guarantee that a lack of influence from your board will be there. We can't guarantee success from your advocacy efforts, but we can guarantee that your failure, or we can guarantee your failure if you don't participate. IASB goes on to say that we can assure you that at the very least, your board will begin to develop meaningful relationships and understandings, which will eventually make a difference. So this scenario that we're going to go through is from the Dream Field, which is an imaginary school district, board discussion. And they are talking about the importance of advocacy and considering how their priorities and advocacy efforts make sense for their district. And then we're going to have a conversation about how it makes sense for us here in Charles City. We're also going to determine suggestions for specific action steps that our board can take that make sense. And Justin may chime in here at the end because we've got some suggestions for you. Part one, we're going to read the scenario. As you read through the scenario, consider the various interests expressed by the members of the Dream Field School Board. Again, an imaginary school board. And we're going to discuss how those interests might resonate with board members here at the table. So you each have a highlighted part, and the item on the Dream Field Agenda reads as follows. Determination of Legislative Priorities and Planning for Board Action. The Dream Field Board President, Sarah Smart, opens the discussion. Board President.
Sarah.
Sarah.
Advocacy on the Hill in Des Moines is something we haven't paid much attention to in the past. Under my leadership, I would like to see this whole board take an active part in discussion and determination of legislative priorities. I don't think we can just say that solely the job of Charlie Challenge, our IASB delegate, as we have in the past.
All right. Board Member Donna Dubius.
That's me. Well, but isn't it? Well, but isn't it? And if it isn't Charlie's role, then it must be the superintendent's. Isn't that part of his job description? It seems to me that it is standard six of the Iowa school leadership standards. So why do I need to get involved with this? I don't think it would do much good anyway.
So...
I have had the IASB delegate...
Hang on, hang on. This brings up the question of whose job is it? So before we continue on with the scenario, let's pause and consider why this might be seen as a whole-board responsibility and why it is a worthwhile consideration for the whole board. So is it Charlie Challenge's job-only, the legislative, or the IASB delegate for Delegate Assembly once a year? Or is it the responsibility of all five board members and the superintendent when it comes to legislative advocacy? What are your thoughts?
All of us.
All of us.
I think it is too, all of us.
And why?
The more noise we make, the more we're heard.
Well, it's unlike when each of us are on a committee. You can report back what's going on, because on a committee, there's really no action that needs to be followed through with. But when it comes to legislative things, action in numbers means results. means results. So it's a little bit different than just being assigned to a committee where buildings and grounds and such where you can just report what's going on. I can report going, what's going on to you, but as a group, we need to each individually then attack our legislators.
Well, and also, you know, from our perspective as elected officials, we know how we react when the public reaches out to us with suggestions or campaigning different subjects. And we listen, we respond. And, um, so I think, yeah.
But I also think that it should be on an individual basis more so than as a board because the legislature is gonna say, "Well, a school board member, he's got, he's gotta say that, you know. He's gotta be in favor of it." Where if you're, he comes through, if you come through as an individual that elected him, he'll say, "Well, if there's a lot of people that are thinking that has elected me here, maybe that's the way we should, maybe we should do something."
Let's see what they say here.
Can I have a question?
Yep.
This is all part of the discussion, right?
Yes.
So I missed the meeting that you all went to a week or two ago.
Mm-hmm.
But I heard back some reporting, what, how many notices, letters, emails do legislators get in Des Moines before it's considered, "Oh, I've heard from enough people, I need to do something."
There's a flood of communication.
Yeah.
What was that number?
Three.
Three.
Okay. That's the number I heard in my conversation. So, you know, if free, get somebody off their butt to do something, so to speak, and there's five of us, and there's how many other districts, 350-some, it definitely makes action.
Well, just each of us would create a flood.
Yes.
Even right now, if five people watching pick up the telephone and call Des Moines and contact their legislator to say, "Hey, this is important," and if all five board members did the same thing, we've got triple the number of the standard flood that it takes to get notice in Des Moines.
Yeah.
And that's just if five people were to call.
But now tonight at five.
Or email.
Tonight at 5:30, I got a phone call from a party and they give their name and everything and I figured they were legitimate. I'm sure they were. They wanted to know if I would support asking for more than the 1.25 percent. They wanted to send a letter with 500 signatures on one letter. That was part of what they talked about down there the other night, too.
Right.
So I told them, "Yes," you know, but that's, I thought maybe that would have more impact on the legislator with getting 500 names on it than me sending one letter with one name.
You need to send you one letter as well.
Yeah.
Yes, they send them both.
Yeah.
I told them, you know.
Let's hear from Charlie.
I have been the I A S B delegate for the last 12 years. I have pride. But to make a real difference, I think we need the support of the whole board. Every single board member should be determined and equipped to make a phone call or attend a meeting because they have clear talking points on our main priorities. This is a whole board job. I appreciate the work our superintendent does, but we are elected representatives just like our legislators. We should all be working on this. It is too important to just hope one or two people can make a difference. The legislative session could have a big influence on our children's future.
Paul Brown.
Well, I can tell you what I think our big priority should be. We have been talking about the importance of high expectations for all of the Iowa core for years on this board. We, we have strong student achievements, but we have not closed the gap of our children in poverty. We know our current assessment does not necessarily reflect the higher expectations of the Iowa core. I believe making real high expectations a reality will take two things. First of all, money to support the teacher training so they can implement the changes needed for this kind of learning and a well-aligned assessment that will tell us if the changes they make have been effective.
Carl Cranky.
Thanks.
All right, Jason.
Well, that's all well and good, you know, that student achievement stuff. But, but as I see it, nothing is going to happen as long as we don't have enough money to make it happen. The governor and the legislature have, have to quit stalling and set the 2014 allowable growth and set it high. And they need to start being more responsible and dependable. We need to tell them to, to keep sitting and setting it high in the next few years to give us an indication that allowable growth is going to match our increasing expenses. In the last few years, I have seen that our costs growing rapidly and the legislature getting stingier. I think we need to tell our legislators to shape up and that it's all about the money.
This was prepared a year ago. So we would say the 2015.
2015.
And allowable growth is gone, it's supplemental state aid, but good job being cranky there, Mr. Board Member.
Thanks.
Donna Dubius.
Well, I'm not sure that the shape up approach will get us anywhere, Carl. There has to be a more positive approach. I think a good approach would be for us to talk about unfunded mandates. We could really talk about what great things our teacher librarian has brought to the junior high. With all the talk about mental health, I think we can also be very proud of some of the things our counseling staff has done. But each of these mandates has taken money away from other programming. Let's talk unfunded mandates as a big push. We could do that positively.
Board President Sarah Smart.
Those are all great comments and there are two areas we haven't even talked about. One is incentives for sharing or restructuring. Our sharing of science teachers and professional development programs has enriched student learning. Another is the school start date. I think we need to reemphasize our special timing needs here in Dreamfield. We have a lot of students graduating early. If we wait to start our school year, then our first semester ends late. How can our mid-year grads get into a college program with our current schedule?
Charlie Challenge.
There are more issues as well. For example, no one has mentioned property tax relief. We have hit on some really important issues. Let's list them and try to think of a couple of talking points for each of these. We have to focus our time and pick a few issues to focus on. I think looking at these areas separately will help us consider the real impact on our students' learning and we can develop some real concrete talking points. Doing this can also help us think about what our big push might look like for this year and then we can develop a plan of action.
All right. So, talking points. Please identify at least one or two powerful talking points that your board, Charles City Board here, might develop around each of the issue areas identified. This is just a quick development of shared ideas and when you've determined your talking point in a given area, we can go on and see what Dreamfield board members developed as their talking points. Now, because it is nearly nine o'clock, uh, maybe you just wanna take one or two of these talking points, Iowa core, allowable growth, which is supplemental state aid, unfunded mandates, restructuring, the school start date, or property tax relief. What might be a talking point or two that we could develop here in Charles City about one or two of those areas?
Unfunded mandates.
Okay.
I mean, if they're gonna mandate us, then, then, but they're not giving us any state aid to cover the costs of them. And I think as long as they're gonna cut our back on our 1.4 percent growth to 1.25, they need to help us out with some of these unfunded mandates.
Then do you wanna talk about allowable growth instead?
Yeah, I think that's what you're.
Since that's the, the starting point.
That's what you're saying, yeah, that's what you're explaining, uh, is the allowable growth. And I agree.
I agree. Allowable growth, that is, that's.
So what are some talking points that you might share with a legislator about 4% versus 1.25%?
Well, I like Donna Dubius's idea of, uh, making note of, of what we have been able to afford and what we are being able to offer our students with the funding we are receiving and the advantages.
What I wrote, what I wrote to our legislators, that's the route I took, was focusing on the implications of them setting it at 1.25 percent. And I spun that in our district based on the information that was given at the I A S B training we were at, which I know was slightly overstated maybe. But, um, the talking points that I developed were, you know, reducing staff, increased, uh, class sizes, um, reducing, uh, extracurricular opportunities and increased property taxes, all as a result of only setting it at 1.25 percent. And then I gave, cited specific examples in our district of how each of those things would be, um, realized if that's what we, what we were given.
Can we put numbers, exact numbers or close to numbers to those?
We can.
For us to use when contacting our legislators so we can know that, of this is how many teachers we're going positions. And we can go back to our cuts list.
That's what I did.
And we can, you know, and then we can say, "Here it is." If, um, we, we are with the 1.25, then here we are again with third grade teachers and librarians.
Yeah.
Social study teachers.
I had taken my information from our cuts, proposed, from the cuts and, uh, and I sent that to 27 legislators. I got six responses, I think it was.
Wow, very good. Your letter was very well written.
Very good.
A nice tweet with it.
Yeah, only one. Eighteen retweets. I'm not, I can't go up from there, I don't think.
In Dreamfield, they, uh, had some talking points around allowable growth. With allowable growth set at 0% as compared to 2%, every kindergarten student would generate $121 less for the following year. And they calculated over the course of kindergarten through 12th grade, that just that kindergarten class of 200 students would generate $314,600 less by having allowable growth at 0 compared to 2%. Also, the governor, uh, is in violation of a law that he passed himself. They did not set allowable growth for fiscal year 16 last year like they were supposed to. It's supposed to be done 18 months ahead of time so that districts have an ability to plan. This, uh, slide, I, I asked Terry to do some digging in. Allowable growth has a long-term impact on school districts. It's not just a one-year deal. Thinking of that kindergarten class again, that just by reducing it over the course of the time that they're in school. So I had Terry do what this says. If allowable growth had been set at 4% every year for the past 12 years, and I forgot to ask, did we get 12 or was it 10? Is this 10 or 12?
12.
All right. So she went back and looked, uh, to see, and if we had 4%, then whatever the money was, she calculated. And if it was less than that, she figured out what it would have been to be 4%. Any guesses as to how much additional revenue we could have generated over that 12-year period if allowable growth had been 4% every year?
Three million dollars.
Four.
That, that's actually high.
A million, two?
Oh.
Close. $859,707. So because it wasn't 4% each year, we're 859, sorry, $859,707 short of where we could have been. And think of what that impact could have had on our programming and what we offer.
That's slightly more than the savings from last year's retirements and what we need to cut this year.
Right.
Neither one of which would have needed to have happened.
Right.
We would have saved taxpayers that extra early retirement funds that we had to offer last year and this year.
Yes.
With allowable growth set at 0%, uh, well, we're on the budget guarantee for next year because we are down 47 students. We graduated 150, 95 kindergartners came in. That's the difference in our enrollment. So we're gonna get $102,128 in new money for next year. And on that budget guarantee, then it will cost taxpayers 20 cents per thousand over and above the levy calculation.
The differences between those numbers and the numbers that I A S B gave us, is there a reason? The numbers that I had put in my email or the list were directly from the handouts that we'd gotten. Is there a reason?
On.
Next year's.
The 102?
The new money.
The new money is the 102 figure.
Versus the negative, whatever it was that they had said in our, I don't have that with.
Well, because we're on the budget guarantee.
Sure.
We get new money for one year after an enrollment loss. It's the second year that if we are still losing enrollment, that there is no guarantee. And then we could have a reduced amount.
So now we lose 102,000 besides?
That's where I took the information from, estimated net new money in the budget guarantee amount.
Yes, and that's the purpose of the budget cuts. That even with our new money.
Okay.
On, if we're gonna settle it at a typical amount each year, that's where that budget shortfall would come in.
Okay.
And that's the number you see reflected on that document.
Sure. Oh, yeah, the 102 is right here, new money for.
Yeah, yep.
So we, we get new money that's just more than eaten up by, yeah.
The increase in what it costs.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Absolutely, yeah, that's.
Makes sense?
Yep, yep, very much so.
All right.
This is net, yep.
Possible action steps. So what are some intra-district communication, board, staff and administration, direct legislative communication or lobbying, and then marshal and community resources? Let's see what Dreamfield came up with. So after they had their talking points done, uh, they would see that they were distributed along with minutes of the meeting to every staff member in the district. Everyone has the same information, same page. They would ask each building to consider, or is underlined, method, uh, excuse me, methods by which they might communicate those talking points to the legislature. So do we have staff members who are making phone calls, uh, sending email communication, social media communication to legislators so that they know what that impact is in the school district? A standing item on the agenda at every board meeting to discuss, exemplify and refine the talking points so that we don't just talk about it once and then it doesn't ever surface again. And then, as Jason mentioned, he's already contacted 27 legislators, six who wrote back. It's probably a pretty good return rate. But can we each individually contact legislators by phone or email or in person about these talking points? Can we get people here in the community? So connections that you have with family and friends, can you get them to contact a legislator or the governor about these talking points? And Carl Cranky, it says, is sure that if he gave the talk to his mother, that she could get the entire care center there to participate. So what are the, what are the connections that you have in the community and beyond where people could be advocating with the legislature?
Well, I'm on the board, director of the Flat County Fire Bureau, and we got a real strong, um, coalition in Des Moines and I think we need to make sure that we get that point across to them, that they would do some workforce down there. And I'm sure they probably already are, but at least let them know that we want them to support us.
Right. The one thing I, you know, and I say it a lot, is that I strongly believe
in just purely educating our community about this stuff, you know, what, what this means. Prior to me being on the board or a parent or any of that, I had no idea what, what the implications were of 1%, 4%, 10%, whatever it is. As we look closer at these things that we get, um, the information that, that we get and how this directly impacts, you can, you could take 1.25 percent, crush the numbers, look at it and say, "That is this position, that position, and that position," and educate our community on those impacts. Those are the things that hit home with people that, okay, you're right, I do need to stand up and I need to, I feel that that's important to me and my district. I need to express that to my legislators. Um, and that's, you know, that, that seems to be reasonably effective. But, you know, the method of doing that, I mean, I'm not sure if there's suggestions on that. I, you know, consider maybe.
We happen to have a suggestion for you. On Thursday, we have an opportunity for the board to get some training from Phil Genery, who is the Government Relations Director at I A S B. And he's willing to, uh, communicate with us by Skype, give us some pointers. And then, uh, the second suggestion is that we travel to Des Moines next week, potentially on a Tuesday. Uh, Justin's working on arranging that. And actually meet with some legislators and tell them face-to-face, "Here's our position, here's the impact that it's having on our school district, here's what we'd like to see you consider." And Phil would help us with that this Thursday prior to a Tuesday, uh, in-person lobbying effort. So, do you wanna add anything, Justin?
Just some of the points that you made were talking points. We need to have a clear message going, if, if we're gonna do this, Phil will help us develop that clear message. Uh, he will explain to us what sort of effective communications that we can do on a, on a one-on-one basis. What I would want to say to you and to anyone watching is our legislatures in the House, Todd Pritchard, in the Senate, Mary Jo Wilhelm, they are not, uh, blocking this in any sense of the imagination. So our legislatures are not the ones to contact. Phil will help. Phil will help us along with what we've learned as to whom we should contact. And so, we've got a list started, but there are certainly people, key players, that we can contact. Thursday workshop, Tuesday trip, and we also, one of the things is we do have a letter to educate the community as well, already in the works as well.
If we went on Tuesday, it would be an early departure date, like 6:00 AM, so that we could get to Des Moines. Todd Pritchard would introduce us in the House, and then we would have some appointments set up to meet with some legislators to talk about issues. So, are you interested in a Thursday Skype with Phil? And then are you interested in traveling to Des Moines to do some talking with representatives and senators?
Yes and yes, depending on times-
Okay.
-and scheduling.
I would need to see if I can get someone to cover me in the office-
Okay.
-Tuesday.
Sure.
Because I'm sure my schedule's already full.
Tuesdays a day, Wednesday, Thursday, no better rewards.
First thing I'd say is one works Thursday for a workshop with Phil to Skype in. So, that would be the first time. A 5:00 meeting will not work. So, like, he's out at 5 to 7, but anything during the day, if you want to do a lunch hour, we could do that.
Early morning?
Define early.
Eight.
Eight.
I'll check. What's your second option?
8:30.
8:05. I'm working in New Hampton, he'd mean a run back. I could make it work, but it would be a travel back to lunch.
My schedule's full from 9:30 on on Thursday already, so-
8:00.
Have to be at the, from 9:00 to 10:00.
Be in West Union by noon.
Okay. And then-
I guess my only question would be, how much different would this be than what we did at our meeting last? He was there in Sumner. In Sumner.
This is going to be, I can't answer that because I wasn't at the meeting, but it's going to be specific, and he knows-
Specific to our district, right?
Specific to our district, it'll be specific to our goals, and it will be something that will equip us to go down to Des Moines and say, and have a clear and concise message. And he will also set up meetings with the power hitters that we need to, that we need to talk with. I mean, we're talking the vice chair of the House Education Committee, because this is coming back to the House. This will probably come, most likely, predominant thinking is this will come back to the House tomorrow.
The two, two of the responses I had gotten, one was from the Speaker of the House, Craig Paulson, and the other was from the House Education Committee Chair, Ron Jorgensen. So, they both have certainly heard our message once, but it took time to respond. But, yeah, follow-up, you know, I certainly have some follow-up questions or comments to their response, but.
Well, and definitely identifying the legislators that need to be convinced otherwise-
Yes.
Is very important.
The 27, I access contact 27 now, and of course, I sent it to our local folks as a whatever, but I pretty much went to the legislative website and found the committees and the subcommittees for the education-related stuff and sent to those folks on there.
I can, Thursday morning?
8:00 AM.
Does that work for you, too?
Yeah, it works for me.
Okay.
Tuesday, I could make Tuesday work.
If we're back in a reasonable time Tuesday, like by 5, 4, 5 o'clock, I believe it's-
Sooner if possible.
Yeah.
That if we're there right away in the morning, then hopefully the meetings could be-
The times I've been down.
Targeted for the morning, and then right after lunch, we could be back on the road.
I may have someone that could take my seat for the day, but I'll have to talk to them.
Okay. You're out of town again, Robin?
Uh.
Tuesday?
No, I will, I will just take the day off of work.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I'm going to have to-
I'm not sure either.
See if I can get away from business.
Let Justin make those arrangements.
So, thank you for facilitating our Dreamfield experience.
You're welcome. And thank you for your willingness to extend this experience. Because that's what it'll take.
Yep.
If we hope and rely that somebody else will, you know, step forward.
Doesn't work.
It's not going to work.
Doesn't work that way. Nope, never does.
Everybody thinks somebody else is going to do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I appreciate the opportunity to be able to take action and be able to participate, and for your taking the time to help us learn and take us. Absolutely.
You bet. So, that leads us into Agenda Item 11, Supplemental State Aid Resolution, that has been prepared and is presented for your consideration this evening.
And it pretty much addresses everything we just talked about.
So, is there a motion to approve the resolution?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution for supplemental state aid.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the proposed resolution for supplemental state aid. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll have roll call vote, please.
Walker?
Yes.
Frisby?
Yes.
May Cumber?
Yes.
Wintering?
Yes.
Deite?
Yes. Motion carried five to zero. Agenda Item 12, Annual Notice to Parents. Do you do this?
I.
You want to?
You've been talking for half an hour.
All right, you go ahead.
The district is expected to provide an annual notice to parents of their general education intervention or GEI problem-solving process. The notice below will be published in our minutes. The general education intervention, GEI, process is available to all students. This process is interactive and ongoing. It involves teams of individuals collaborating with one another to create academic/behavioral intervention designed to meet the diverse needs of individual students. Members of the GEI teams include parents, educators, caregivers, administrators, AEA 267 support staff, and others who are knowledgeable about the educational needs of a student. The purpose of our GEI process is to identify and implement academic/behavioral intervention strategies that address individual student needs in general education classroom settings. The GEI process involves direct and frequent monitoring of student progress in the area of concern. It is also part of the assessment process that is used to determine whether or not a student needs to be considered for special education services. Moving on to Agenda Item 13 is the financial report for January of 2015, and that would be Mrs. O'Brien.
I'll just make two comments. We did pay our early retirement benefits to last year's 10 people this month, so you'll see that coming off of the management fund, fund balance. And also, the five activity accounts that the auditors had in their report were closed. Three of them were transferred to other balances in the activity fund, and the other two were transferred to the general fund.
Are there any questions for Terry? If not, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the, Terry was reporting, presenting.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the financial report for January of 2015. Hearing no further discussion, we'll have roll call vote.
Frisby?
Yes.
May Cumber?
Yes.
Wintering?
Yes.
Deite?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero. Agenda Item 14, Consideration of Consent Agenda. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
I'll second it.
Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Have a roll call vote, please.
May Cumber?
Yes.
Wintering?
Yes.
Deite?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Frisby?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero. Agenda Item 15, Important Upcoming Dates.
In addition to the board meetings that you see listed, our wrestlers are in dual-team action tomorrow night at Osage. All-state speech, as I mentioned, is February 21st, so a week from Saturday, and-
Bowling on the 17th.
Bowling on the 17th. At Forest City.
Boys and girls both?
Oh, that's when we're going to, Des Moines. The 17th? That's the day we're going to Des Moines. What time is that? Like 4, 5, 6?
Forest City.
Probably 4:00.
Bowling?
Yeah. 1?
1:00 and noon.
Okay.
We'll follow the tweets on the way home. So, Agenda Item 16 is adjournment, and we will go into closed session for strategy. Thank you, everyone.